It proved to be, hopefully, a better year than last year. And so we will start out with, excuse me.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Hold on a second, you guys. Okay. All the order, pledge of allegiance. I guess. Who wants to lead the pledge?
Excuse me. Point of order?
Yes.
Determination of quorum?
Well, okay. Do we, let's, present.
Francine Doncic.
Present.
Thomas Bruce. Sarah Savilecik.
Here.
Kate Nelson.
Here.
Larry Peyton.
Here.
Patricia Phillips.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, now moving right along, pledge of allegiance. How about, Mr. Bruce, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I would too. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, before the ethics law announcement, I would like to give a introductory statement for Zoom. Any participants wishing to speak via Zoom shall sign in to Zoom with their first and last names and identify themselves with their first and last names when they are called upon. If you're a member of the public and you wish to speak, then please only click the raise hand prompt symbol during the public comment portion of the item you wish to speak on. You will only be called upon to speak during the public comment periods. All panelists on Zoom should mute their mics until they're ready to speak. If anyone's having difficulty hearing audio through Zoom, it may be helpful to use earbuds. The other thing that I would, might, would request would be that all members of the commission, before you speak, announce your name. You can use your last name, preferably both your first and last name, so that the record is very clear as to whom is speaking. So with that being given, do we have an announcement on the ethics law?
Yes.
Jen Gustafson, please.
Thank you. Commissioners are reminded that if with respect to any matter or any person coming before the commission today, number one, you have received a gift or loan. Number two, you have a cunyary interest. Number three, you have a commitment in a private capacity such as a family, employment, business, or similar relationship. Or number four, you provided representation or counseling before an agency to a person or entity for compensation within the last year on a matter that's being considered today before the commission. Just remember, you have to disclose that gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation at the time the matter is being considered. And furthermore, you must abstain from deliberation or voting on the matter if it's clear that the gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation would materially affect the independence of judgment of a reasonable person. Commissioners are also reminded today that under the planning commission rules, if you've had any contact outside this meeting with any persons interested in a matter coming before the commission today, you should disclose the nature of that contact at this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Do we have a, an appeal procedure? Secretary Light?
Most decisions rendered by the planning commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the planning commission and you want to appeal its action, you may put so in writing within ten calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is reduced to writing, filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission, and mailed to the resiliency in the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washington Code. Call the planning staff immediately at 328-6100 for information on the appeal procedure and application due.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
Seeing none? Would like to see any comments or an approval?
Mary?
Yes.
May I interrupt? I just had two people put their hands up. I'm assuming they are interested in public comment.
Okay, then we'll go back and, and let them have their comment.
Okay. So the first is Derek Schoeff, and I'm going to give him permission to talk.
Hello, can you hear me?
You can.
Yes.
Okay, now is this comment time for the Woodland Village, the Woodland Village Planning Committee part? Can I comment now about that, or do I have to wait?
You, you can comment now, and you can comment on, on the particular item. It's your choice.
Okay. I'd like to comment that I'm asking the board to deny Woodland Village to build the condominium project that they are proposing, and they want to change the setbacks, and that they want to change that they have a multiple, multi-families, I think it's 14 per acre of land. And I'm citing safety concerns. The safety concerns is fire, that our fire department right now does not have adequate equipment to take care of a potential fire if a larger building is built, and the closest would most likely be coming from Reno or other locations. And if we were to equip our fire department with capabilities to do that, that'd be additional cost to the, to us, that we'd have to buy more equipment and more things to take care of a multiple person dwelling. And that's also with the setbacks being changed to zero. Setbacks were set in place for safety reasons for fire, and that the setbacks changing, the setbacks would induce possible more risk of fire to our public. And also, the safety of our children going to the school that's nearby. With multiple people, multiple peoples living in such a small area, will have increased traffic flow. And with the increased traffic flow, Reno already has a problem with pedestrians getting hit, and we're just asking for problems with more traffic in that area, more congestion in that area, right next to a school. And we'd have to also, once we have an incident, there's potential for more infrastructure that needs to be added. So there's more cost that's being put onto the county with the fire department and also traffic issues, the more cost that's going to be caused if we allow, if you allow these changes to be made. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
Yes, let me move on to, it's going to take me, I'm getting the hang of the timer, so I'll be a little slow here in the beginning. Okay, the next individual we have is Randall Chuck.
Randall, you're on.
Okay, I saw a pop-up that had to touch or something. So I have some traffic concerns. They, they did not, in the, in the study, they did not look at Village Parkway and Polar Bear Drive intersection, and in Polar Bear Drive and Desert Lake Drive intersection, and then Desert Lake Drive to Crystal Canyon Boulevard, and then Crystal Canyon Boulevard to White Lake Parkway. That path, there are school buses that go down regularly on that path. I know when I'm walking my dog, I see them all the time. In addition, there was an accident that occurred right there on Crystal Canyon and White Lake Parkway, right in that area, and it was a fatality, and it involved a school bus. So their report, their study on the traffic and the flow, it just completely missed this path, this route, and they need to do more studies on that and possibly figure out if there's improvements needed for these intersections. That's, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
We do. We have Blair Speth.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm Blair Speth, I live in the Cold Springs community. First of all, I want to say that it's ridiculous that this proposal is even being considered. We in Cold Springs are a little different than people that call Reno home, and we moved up here to be close to open space, you know, where we can see the mountain views. We specifically chose this community to be far from the traffic and density of Reno Sparks. This proposal is against the purpose, idea, and very soul of our great community. The application for special use permit states that this development is much needed and will implement and preserve community character, and that adjacent properties will benefit from this development. I'd like to know how is increased traffic of nearly 1,000 daily trips much needed? How would the very first three-story buildings in Cold Springs preserve community character, and how would diminished property values be a benefit to the adjacent properties? We do not want or need attached housing in Cold Springs and strongly oppose the approval of the special use permit. Look, some of us know we'll never be rich. But for some of us, having a house we love in a great community is our dream, and it's taken a lot of life planning to achieve. It's not right to take that away from us, it's just not right. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
We do. We have a Taylor MCC.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, I recently bought here, and I bought in the Woodland Village due to the fact that it was away from the city. I came from a city, and I know that this is one of the five safest communities in this neighborhood. When you put multi-housing in it, you bring more crime, more traffic, there's less parking, plus then our children are not as safe. Where they're trying to do it is basically the backyard of our middle school. Us as parents do not want that much traffic, nor housing. Also, when you look at condos and rental values, for us, this is our forever home. We've spent thousands of dollars to make sure our neighbors aren't very close. And when you put condos in, now you've lowered our property values. Another reason is, when I bought, I bought in Cold Springs because it is not the Cindy mentality. We want to stay small. And that doesn't mean not growing, but where you're planning to put this, this is our community center. It's where our dog park is, where I see my neighbors at every morning. We already have a stream of traffic going to work on a Monday, nine to five. When you're adding all of this, along with the buses, and the weather, we have more snow. We can't handle the traffic. We don't have the police out here, we have to use the sheriff. We don't have the fire services. If one of these three-story buildings catches on fire, the winds out here are horrible, and now we have a whole half a subdivision that's burnt down. I really want you guys, when you're thinking about this, to not think about the money aspect. Think about the people that are paying their taxes to live like this. And we're wanting safety for our children, so we come out here. And then your decisions can put our children at a safety risk. So when you guys are thinking about this, think about the generation that we are raising children out here. We are opening up new schools. And with doing that, we do not want condos or multi-housing, a lot of dense housing, because that puts everybody's safety, traffic, fire, everything will increase along with the costs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
We do. We have, I'm going to pause just a minute. I'm going to mute a couple folks before we move on. Sorry, it's kind of a little tedious. Thanks for your patience.
Sure.
Okay, our next is going to be Diana Berlin Smith.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, my name, you just said it there, I'm Diana. I'm a residential appraiser. I'm here to specifically address information that was not in the traffic impact report. According to the report submitted, there's going to be an additional 851 vehicles on Village Parkway. What is, who does this impact, and what is the impact? It specifically impacts the 115 homes identified that backed this road, that specifically backed this road. Most like me never received a notice about this. We had to hear it on our community page. Now, let me tell you why it impacts us. Road noise. What is road noise? It's what keeps you awake at night and prevents you from having the enjoyment of your backyard. Now, FHA and Fannie Mae both address locations as a factor in their guidelines, and this is a guideline that all residential appraisers must address in their appraisals and appraisals that are done for valuations for homes. They both specifically state that road noise is having an effect on the marketability and value of a property. An appraiser must analyze and report this location factor when valuing a home. To this fact, I did a poll of appraisers. Of the 53 that responded, 70% said that in a stable market, a single-family home backing a busy road is subject to road noise, they would consider that location as possibly adverse. Less than 1% said the location may retain, may remain neutral. I also surveyed realtors in the market area, including the Nevada Real Estate Commissioner himself. They all stated that properties subject to road noise are affected both by marketability and sell price. What does that mean? It means, given two homes that are similar, that the home subject to the road noise takes longer to sell, and usually sells for less. Everyone agreed with that. I just asked them, what was their opinion? That's what they told me. That's what our market people say. Please take into consideration those of us in existing homes backing this road, as that's 150 of us, and that was not in the traffic impact survey. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
We do. One moment. Okay, we have a Cindy.
Hello?
You're on.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. I don't have a long comment to make. I think what I think has already been mentioned regarding the impact on the community of making these changes and adding these condos, and I really just wanted to add my voice. And I'm sure there's also many who haven't joined the call who feel strongly about this. And so I also am requesting to deny this plan. That's all.
Thank you. Next.
And I do not see any further public comment.
Well, seeing no further public comment, let's move on to approval of the agenda.
Sorry, Judge Chesney, I'm just going to announce this. Blair Speth has put up a hand again, but has already made public comment. And so I'm going to lower that hand for now.
Okay.
Okay.
So do we have a motion to approve the?
Judge Chesney, Commissioner Doncic moves to approve.
Do we have a second?
Commissioner Bruce moves to second.
Well, we have a first by Commissioner Doncic and a second by Commissioner Bruce. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, passes unanimously. The next, we'll move on to item seven. Approval of the minutes for the November 4th, 2020 meeting draft minutes. And I think we could take the both at the same time, and the November 16th, 2020 draft minutes. Is there any discussion on the drafts of either of those meetings? Seeing none, I'll call for a motion.
Commissioner Chesney? Mr. Doncic moves to approve.
Do we have a second?
Commissioner Nelson, a second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Doncic and a second by Commissioner Nelson. All those in favors signify by saying aye. 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 Any opposed? Seeing none, passes unanimously. Then we'll move on next to planning items. And item number eight A is the Regional Transportation Commission presentation by Amy Cummings or Dan Jonies. Do we have that presentation?
Thank you. My name is Amy Cummings with the Regional Transportation Commission of Washoe County, and Dan Dungus, who is our planning manager, is also on the line. And we really appreciate you making time to talk to us today about the 2050 Regional Transportation Plan. This is a very important document that we put together, RTC, that defines the major transportation investments that we're going to make through 2050. So it's a long-term document. We do update it every four years, that's a federal requirement. So we all know that conditions do change rather quickly as development occurs and economic conditions change. So this is something that we revisit on a regular basis to update. But we're right now in our cycle for updating this one, which we hope to have finished here in the next couple of months. The guiding principles of the RTC, which are identified in this plan, are that everything we do, we want to come back to supporting safe and healthy communities, economic prosperity and innovation, sustainability, and to increase the number of travel choices that people have in our community. We have, we always work to have a community-based process. This year has been a little bit different. We have working groups. We were able to start at the beginning of the year and have our first visioning workshop in person. After that, all of our committees and our public meetings have shifted to being online through either Zoom or video conferences. So right now, we do have a virtual public meeting that's online. You can find it at the rtcwashoe.com website, and we did share the details on that with the staff here, who I believe are going to be able to share that with all of the members. So we would encourage you to go there. There's this information that I'm presenting today, as well as some additional details and a survey. Right now, we're at the point of asking members of the public what their priorities are. When we first started, earlier in the summer, we had a call for projects, and we had another online survey at that point to ask people in the community to tell us what projects they wanted us to look at in this plan. So we compiled those, and now we're going back and saying, what are the highest priorities from your perspective? So there's an online survey that invites folks to do that. And we'll also be in front of the Washoe County Commission with the same presentation next week to seek their input as well. Safety, of course, is always extremely significant for RTC, as well as the county. And we've been able to work with some data provided by INDOT, so we know where the crashes have been. We looked at a three, excuse me, a five-year period to identify where those crash hotspots are. And that was looking at crash frequency, crash severity, and the crash rate. And this map shows you where those problem areas are. So we've been looking at identifying projects to help address those, and that's one of the factors that we want to consider in the prioritization of projects. We also want to work with our partners in land use planning. Course transportation and land use are very closely interconnected. So as we look at prioritizing projects, we do want to consider what the land use tiers are. They're identified in the regional plan. And we also are working closely with staff at our partner jurisdictions to get their input on impacts related to transportation and growth. And in relation to sustainability, we want to look at ways where we can reduce carbon emissions and improve our air quality. Part of that is through our electric bus program, and we want to find more ways to get people on the bus. We know not many people are riding the bus right now, but once we get on the other side of the COVID pandemic, we hope to increase that ridership and also make sure we're providing opportunities for people to walk and bike to destinations. Some of the other goals that are in the plan, and each of these goals is addressed in a chapter of the RTP. We want to be efficient with how we manage our systems, our roadways, and our transit operations, and our traffic signals. We want to integrate all of the different modes of transportation so they work together well, promote connectivity within our region. We are looking particularly closely at equity and environmental justice concerns. Freight, of course, is a growing issue for our community, and we want to make sure we're monitoring the performance of the investments that we make. The survey that you'll see on our website divides the projects, because we had a lot of projects that came through in our initial survey. So to make it a little bit easier for folks to respond to, we've divided them into the different types of projects. So there's freeways, new roads, capacity on existing roads, so adding lanes to existing roads, and then multimodal projects. And what we mean by that are projects where we're adding bicycle facilities, improving sidewalks, but we're not adding lanes for cars. And we'll, I'll show you the maps of what those different projects look like shortly. And as we are also concurrent with this online survey, evaluating the projects based on safety, traffic congestion, the regional land use plan, and the other factors that I mentioned, flood mitigation is one as well. We look at our bicycle pedestrian master plan and pavement condition, where that is available. And also looking at emergency fire and evacuation is a new element that we're focusing on this, this version. So first, I'll show you the map of multimodal projects that have been suggested. And again, this means bicycle and pedestrian-focused projects. And they were primarily focused in the central core, mostly within the McCarran Loop, but not exclusively. And these are areas where we have a pretty good grid network, but many of the roadways are older and have deteriorated sidewalks, or they're not ADA compliant. And this is also where we had a lot of our pedestrian safety concerns. And there are two maps, I just wanted to point out as well. There are just so many projects in a small area. We put them on two maps so you could see them more clearly. There's no real difference in the different maps other than to get better, the ability to differentiate between the projects or the lines on the map. I wanted to highlight the new capacity project, so this is adding additional lanes on existing roads. And here, this is reflective of where we see most of the traffic congestion, which is primarily in the North Valleys and Spanish Springs areas. We also are looking at some capacity needs on the McCarran Loop, and some in South Meadows, but not to the same extent. So the lines that you see here, and when you, if you go to the rtcwashoe.com website, there's an interactive map where you can click on all of these in more detail and see them up close in terms of project limits and description. Freeways, or we work very closely with INDOT. Of course, INDOT is the lead on freeway improvements. But we do want to make sure those products are prioritized in the regional transportation plan. So I know you're all very familiar with the work that's going on right now for the spaghetti bowl. INDOT has plans to extend that improvement away from just the ramps that they're working on right now, farther down 580 to Mill Street, farther east on I-80 in Sparks. And they have plans for widening 395 north in a couple of different phases. And you can see those limits here on this, this graphic. We're also looking at the need for new road connections. And where this, as you, is evident in this map, is most pronounced, is the need to connect the North Valleys and Spanish Springs areas. A lot of the congestion that we see on McCarran and on the spaghetti bowl and Pyramid Highway and 395 are because there are just so few connections between those, those points, especially with growing employment and residential uses in both of those. We've heard from the public, as well as from our data, that there's some benefits to adding some new connections. So that's what you see here. Many of these are in our current plan, but there are a couple of new ones. One is extending Lemon Drive over to Rock Boulevard. Another is extending Moya up to Lemon. Another is extending Moya up to Lemon. Of course, we're also planning for our transit system. We want that to be as productive and effective as we can with our limited resources. And we do want to emphasize that we're putting out as much service in terms of hours of transit that we can afford right now. So given the limited resources, we don't know that we're going to have the ability to expand that any further. But we do want to have a vision in place. So if the economy grows and we do have additional revenue in the future, that we are able to do that. So one would be an expansion of Flex Ride. We've had two pilots start up just late last year, the North Valleys and Verde Somerset area. Sparks and Spanish Springs started up earlier last year as well. So those have been very successful for us. So there are some opportunities potentially to expand that if resources become available. And we're just about to open up the Lincoln Line to extend, excuse me, the Virginia Line up to the University of Nevada Reno. That will be opening here in the next few weeks. And we do want to continue to look at expanding our rapid transit service. Again, these are buses every 10 minutes. It's a great service that really helps connect our community. So you can see extending that down South Meadows to Mount Rose Highway on Virginia and extending out a little bit past Keystone on West Fourth Street. So we have our virtual public meeting and online survey open through January 14th. So I'd encourage everyone to take a look at that and share your comments with us. You can also email us with any other comments that you have or suggestions. So thank you for your time. And Dan and I are available to try to answer questions that you may have.
Thank you, Amy. Does, does anybody have any questions of Amy or Dan? If not, I, I kind of have a comment. You mentioned several times about additional funding. And I, and I said on an, on a RTC committee. But the, the old story that development pays for itself is really not true. Not true at all. And so the developers will probably scream when I say this, but the development impact fees nowhere near cover the impact of the transportation infrastructure or any of the infrastructures. So the existing population sooner or later is paying for the developer's profit. And that, that is not, I understand that is not your concern, but that is, that's a very legitimate point that needs to be addressed when we start looking at impact fees. So we talk about affordable housing, the missing middle, all these beautiful buzzwords, but they don't help you folks out at all with these things. And so I just, for the record, want to state that new development does not pay its own way. And if there's any way that we could possibly increase the revenue for the transportation system, along with the rest of the infrastructure systems, perhaps this rampant development could possibly get throttled back enough that we come to the realization that there's no such thing as affordable housing. I got off on, I went down the rabbit hole on that one, and I'm sorry, but I really want to thank you, Amy. And I want you to know that you have my support any way that we can go, other than raising our taxes, because we have taxes equal to or better than the great state of California, the late great state of California. And I don't think that there's, there's room for additional tax revenue, at least on the local level. So thank you, Amy. I really appreciate you letting me vent there.
Thank you.
Chair Chesney, Sarah Chevillcheck has her hand raised.
Yes, Sarah.
Thank you, Chair. Amy, my question is, is when I, if I go, when I go to the rtcwasshow.com website, will I see those maps that you shared with us tonight? Because they were really tiny, so I want to be able to look at them a little better.
Well, you'll get the link. It's rtcwasshow.com and then click on Metropolitan Planning. And then you'll see a link for Regional Transportation Plan. And that's where you can get to our survey. You can watch a virtual presentation of what I just provided. And then the survey has these graphics and then they're larger and you can see them. And there's also a map link that lets you click to an interactive map. And then you can zoom in and out and the, on the various areas.
Thank you. That will be very helpful. Thank you so much.
Any further questions? Commissioner Phillips?
Yes, I, Mr. Chairman, I agree with what you were saying. That's probably my greatest worry is the extra funding that is going to be needed for all the roads and the improvements.
Thank you. Anybody else? Tom, are you awake?
I'm here. And I don't seem, I, I'm not going to take up many more time repeating what's been said, which I agree with.
Okay. So if there's no further comments or questions from the commission, I want to thank you, Amy, so much for the wonderful presentation. We really appreciate it. And I think we can move on to planning items. Item eight, or excuse me, item nine, public hearings. And as we move into public hearings, the first on the agenda is item nine A, tentative subdivision map, case number WTM 20-005, and special use permit case number WSUP 20-0021, Woodland Village Town Center, for possible action and hearing. So I guess from Secretary Lloyd, could we have a description?
Yes. All right. So tonight's item, tentative subdivision map, case number WTM 20-005, and special use permit WSUP 20-0021 for Woodland Village. It's a, for possible action. For one, a tentative subdivision map to allow the subdivision of 8.6 acres into 111 attached residential lots. And two, a special use permit to allow the use of the single family attached per table 110 302051, to allow up to 14 dwelling units per acre of the Cold Springs Area Plan Policy CS 2.2.2, to decrease the front setback to eight feet and the rear and yard, rear and side yard setbacks to zero feet, to decrease the minimum lot width to 16 feet, and to decrease the minimum lot size to 800 square feet. Representing Washoe County in this matter is Planner Julie Olander.
Julie, excuse me, just a second. Are there any disclosures by commissioners' ethics or expertise communication? Seeing none, Julie, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. And I will get my item going here. Good evening. This is Julie Olander with Washoe County Planning and Building. Before you, you have the, the applicant is requesting a tentative subdivision map for 11 attached residential lots and a special use permit to allow the single family attached units and also to meet the Cold Springs Area Plan Policy, which allows up to 14 dwelling units per acre. And then also to vary the building setbacks and standards. Just reminding you where this location is. It's out in Cold Springs, located, there's a map showing that. The application previously did come before you and they asked for a master plan and zone change for one of the parcels, APN 55639005. The master plan amendment was to change the designation on 71% of that parcel or 40, or 4.4.2 acres of the parcel to suburban residential, from suburban residential to commercial. And then the remaining, the 29%, 1.2 acres of the parcel to remain the same and not be changed. Also, whoops, sorry. They changed the, the request was, there was a request to change the regulatory zone on that parcel. Again, it's 71% was, it was publics and semi-public facility. And the request was to change it to neighborhood commercial. And again, the 29% or 1.2 acres remained PSP. There's a fam, existing family center that's located on that parcel. And that's where the master plan and regulatory zone was not changed. The Washoe County Board of County Commissioners approved this on May 26th. And then the Regional Planning Commission approved it on July 23rd. And here you can see it a little bit clearer. Family Center is still PSP. The rest of that parcel is now neighborhood commercial, as is the parcel to the south. The applicant is now requesting a tentative subdivision map for the 9.8 acre site, the two parcels. The request includes the portion of the parcel, the 4.2 acres that was approved to be changed to NC. And then the other part, larger parcel, which is 5.57 acres. So there's a total of 8.6 acres where the attached 1100, 111 attached single family units would be located. So the special use permit is required because Cold Springs Area Plan has a requirement that has to be, has to go, be approved by special use permit if they're going to have more than 14 dwelling units per acre. They allow that if it's a neighborhood commercial, which this parcel, these part, two parcels are provided. There is a commercial use included in the development proposal. And currently, there is commercial use on the larger parcel, the, where the village grill and daycare and tea shop are located. And then just to let you know, even though they're, they're allowed to have 14 dwelling units per acre, the applicant is only requesting a density of 12.9 units for the 8.6 acre site. Here is showing what the, the, this special use permit is also requesting to change the, the building placement standards. So as I said, the property is got a regulatory zone of NC. And you can see the front setbacks would be 15, Woodland Village is requesting eight. The rear setbacks are 20 in NC, and they're requesting zero and also a zero side. That's to accommodate the attached buildings. And then the minimum lot sizes, Woodland Village is asking for 800 square feet, where NC is 10,000 square feet. And then the width is also being requested to be changed from 16 feet to 75 feet. And then the height is probably going to be lower, NC would allow six feet, 60 feet. And they're only asking for two to three stories. Woodland Village is planned to help create a true town center. Currently, basically what you have out there is residential with a little bit of commercial. And the applicant is hoping to make a more town center orientation there. They are saying that the buildings, that there will be 20 buildings and they'll be between two to three stories high. The buildings will have two to 10 units in each building and the units will have two to three bedrooms. The buildings will be alley loaded with either one or two car garages to accommodate one or two cars. And then a more, majority of them will have a 20-foot-long driveway. The front doors of the units will be opposite of the garage with a private front area. And then the applicant is proposing a network of trails connecting the new buildings to existing trails. And this, these areas will be maintained by HOA or a landscape management association. And here's an architectural look at what the applicant is envisioning at the site. This is looking from the park area. And then here's a layout showing you how the, the buildings would be layout, laid out, showing where the family center is to the north. And then the commercial building is to the south. So you can see that there's quite a few different building sizes. Some of them are smaller and some are larger. The applicant indicates that the 11, 111 detached single family units will be more affordable and will provide an alternative to the typical single family detached housing found in the area. And that the development will primarily, though it will primarily will be residential, the applicant is open to looking at adding commercial space in the future if it's, if there's a demand for it. The site is relatively flat and most of the site is vacant, except for the family center and the commercial building and parking areas. Family center and commercial buildings, like I said earlier, will remain. And then adjacent to the site to the north is Shaw Middle School. And to the, the east is the Washoe County Village Center Park, which is about 13 acres. And then the other surrounding areas are residential. And here you can sort of see where the, the school is to the, to the north. The park is primarily to the east. And then surrounding areas are just single family detached housing. The site was previously graded and they're, they're not anticipating that there'll be a lot of grading needed to, on the site. However, there will be grading involved in constructing that proposed buildings. And then there will be some grading to remove some of the parking areas and streets. So they'll have to do that to prepare, to prepare the site for the building pads and, and parking areas. Here's sort of a layout of the parking. So with the 111 units, you would, Washoe County Code will require 222 spaces. Woodland Village is proposing 294. For the commercial building, they have about 30-plus spaces we would require. It's a little hard to tell. Our, our parking requirements are based on the use. And so it's not, there's not one use there. There's going to be several different ones, but the Woodland Village applicant is proposing 45 spaces. And then the community center, which is existing, they have 68 spaces. We've required 68 spaces, but they're proposing 70. So there's going to be an increase of parking spaces for the, for the development. The site will be fully landscaped according to Washoe County Code. And the applicant indicates that 81,229 square feet, 20, about 20% of the site will be landscaped with 285 trees. And then there'll be landscaping between the buildings and that area will be maintained by the HOA. Water will be provided by the Great Basin Water Company. And then Washoe County will provide sewer service. The utilities have been planned out there for some time. So a lot of the infrastructure is there to accommodate the proposed development. For roadways, there will be several points of access, primarily off of Village Parkway. And the applicant is proposing these different accesses to disperse the traffic to different points from the development. The main access to the development will be at the intersection of Rockland and Village Parkway. And then the access for the family center is going to be moved, but it's not anticipated to have any impacts to, to the center itself. The streets and the off-street parking will be privately owned and maintained by the development. The traffic study anticipates to generate 851 average daily trips, with 61 trips occurring during the AM peak hours and 71 trips occurring during the PM peak hours. And they will, it will have some impact to the area. The traffic study recommends that the applicant provides different mechanisms to mitigate the impacts. And the applicant is proposing to improve the ingress and egress intersections on Village Parkway to include signage, striping, crossways, and turn lanes. The proposed development is zoned for Inskip Elementary School, Cold Springs Middle School, and it should be North Valleys High School. I saw, I apologize for the Spanish Springs. That was an error. And the development is, will generate approximately 14 elementary students, seven middle school students, and seven high school students. And here's sort of a graphic showing that increase. And you can see that North Valleys, their, their populations do get a little high in the 20, after 2021. However, the district is in discussion with the developers at Stonegate, which is in the city of Reno, to acquire property in that area for a high school. And also the district expects to see some relief from North Valleys High School with the, with the new HUG High School that's coming online. And then also the, the, the technical academy, I should say. They're expecting changes because of the They're expecting changes because of the two new HUG High Schools. There should be some changes there with the numbers. This did go before the North Valleys Cab on December 14th. And they did approve it unanimously. They did have some comments, they were concerned about traffic on 395. They were concerned about availability of infrastructure and bus service. Notices were set 500 feet from the site, which is what a tentative map and special use permit require. And it was sent to 77 affected property owners. Comments were received from various agencies. No comments were received recommending denial. Several recommended conditions, which are included in the conditions of approval, which are involved, which are in the staff report. Staff was able to make the 10 findings for the tentative subdivision map. And I do provide a motion for that. And then also staff was able to make the five findings for the special use permit. And I provide a motion for that. And I'm available for any questions. And I know the applicant is also here and has a presentation to provide for you to see. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Are there any questions to Julie at this time? We will be able to revisit questions with her later. Pardon?
This is Commissioner Chevallcheck. I do have a quick question.
Yes, Commissioner.
So with 111 units and this being expressed as affordable housing, how did you generate those school numbers and that they are so low?
You know, I, I get these numbers from, this is Julie Olander of Washoe County Planning and Building. Sorry, thank you for the question. I get these numbers from Washoe County School District. I'm not sure how they provided that numbers. I did have a little conversation about that. However, that was the numbers they, they, they provided. And they do seem to be a little low. I, I, I agree, but I didn't get any response back from them after I, I asked about those.
I just wanted to go on record that I am very suspect of those numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any further questions to Julie right now?
Eric Chesney? Commissioner Doncic? Yes, Julie, I do have a question. Red, I'm always worried about traffic concerns and everything. And I went and read everything and one of the, and maybe it covered it somewhere, but I couldn't figure out where. But when RTC replied back on the project, they had two additional questions that were not additionally answered. It's in our exhibit B and it talks about trip assignments. They say the volumes are low for the site accessed via Crystal Canyon Boulevard. We think it has higher volumes, especially during the peak PM. Was this looked into? They, they would like, they would expect travel times to be shorter existing. They would expect travel times be shorter exiting the Cold Spring exit rather than Border Town. And then the second was for the warranted analysis was condition C and D slash 70% factor taken into consideration. So I don't know if those were answered, if they were, I just didn't, wasn't able to pick it up.
Julie Olander of Planning Building, I apologize, you sort of broke up there. You had questions about the letter from RTC?
Right, on page two of the letter from RTC, they put out two further questions. They had as to the traffic study. So, and of course, there's so much data in that traffic study and I'm not a traffic expert. Were those questions specifically answered?
Yeah, I would have to refer to the, I know that the applicant has the, their traffic. I believe Paul Saleggi is available for questions for that. So he might be better to address that. Was there another question, you said, like I say, you sort of broke up?
Well, there were two, no, there were two questions on that page.
Okay.
The RTC put out. And I'm sorry, I went through the whole traffic study and maybe I missed it, but I couldn't figure out where they specifically answered those two questions.
All right. I'm going to refer to the applicant to answer that question for you, if that's okay.
No problem, Julie, thank you.
Okay, are there any further questions to Julie? Now we, we're going to come back to Julie. Let's keep in mind that this is a tentative subdivision map case. So there, there's a lot of process to go through after this. So if you have further questions to Julie, we will address this again before, before we go anywhere with this thing. Is there any immediate questions you have for Julie? Then I would like to move on to the applicant's presentation.
Okay, thanks. Let me just.
I can hear you.
Get this going real quick.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Eric Hasty. I'm with Wood Rogers and I'm representing the applicant, Woodland Village North LLC. Talking to you about the special use per tentative map. Julie did a really good job covering most of the details. So I will try not to be too, too repetitive here. I think we're all familiar with the site at this point. So again, I just want to emphasize that this is an infill development. It's, and by infill means it's surrounded by development. All, a majority of the existing infrastructure is already adjacent to the property or within the property. As she said, for the Cold Springs Family Center and Village Grill will remain. There will be some circulation that will get changed around as, as part of this proposed project. But this is a mixed use development that we're incorporating residential in with the commercial as well as the family center aspect. There's a lot of other amenities around here to take advantage of. That makes this an attractive area for a town center. This has always been planned as a town center since the inception of Woodland Village. And we have, you know, the amenities of the park with, that are located along Village Grill. You have the Shaw Middle School that's located over here. Several schools are in, within walking distance. And then Woodland Village has these trails that come through from the surrounding neighborhoods. And, you know, kind of like this is the center of town. All, all roads lead into here on the pedestrian connectivity. So as part of this, we want to make sure that we're incorporating that into the development. As Julie said, we came through earlier with a master plan and a rezone last year, which were unanimously approved by the planning commission. The neighborhood commercial zoning designation was always anticipating for this type of development. So with the master plan and the rezone, we were anticipating this as being the next step throughout the process. So we already went over what we're requesting, special use permit to allow 14 dwelling units per acre. The, I'll get into why we need to modify the yard standards, a little bit more detail on that. And then of course, the tentative map. So again, proposing a mixed use development. The streets are alley loaded, so here's the alleyways. This is the way it kind of works. Alley's are right here, there's driveways on majority of these. And then we have parking situated throughout. We have the townhomes are, the, the front doors are located on the front. So they'll be located around Village Parkway, along the Town Center Drive over here as well as along the park. So the front doors open out onto this and kind of create a neighborhood park feel. Again, we will have the pedestrian, I just want to point out the pedestrian connectivity that I pointed out earlier. We have existing crosswalks coming in right here. Again, we are maintaining those through the site to allow pedestrians to still access the park as well as the school, the family center, the village grill. There's another one along here, along Vilch Parkway. Again, we're maintaining that same trail that people have been using. And then over here on Village Center Parkway, or Drive, sorry. So here's a little bit more detail into the architecture that we'll be using. These, the architecture is, is designed to mimic, to, to blend with the surrounding homes. These don't, don't look like a traditional town home. They look like it's a big, single family home, but there's actually several, several units inside this. A lot of landscaped common area. This rendering here is taken along Vilch Center Drive. So you can see the pedestrian connectivity that comes through here. There's the existing houses over there blending in with the same size as the surrounding neighborhood. Again, here's another rendering of, of what we're looking like. And as we, as Julie mentioned, there's two and three story buildings. And these are designed to be stepped so that the two-story buildings are located along all the existing development, along Woodland Village Parkway, as long as Vilch Center Drive. And then the three-story buildings will be one step behind there along the park. So the buildings along Vilch Drive and along the exist, where there is adjacent to residential adjacency is, is going to be two-story and then three-story behind. Again, we have pedestrian connectivity throughout, allowing people to still go through this and utilize the amenities surrounding this area. I'll just go into a little bit, Julie did a good job talking about the parking. I'll just try, kind of talk about how the residential parking breaks down. So as you mentioned, there are one or two car garages in each unit. And so that is where some of the parking comes from as well as the driveways. And then so for people who cannot park and are guests or anything like that, there are guest notes sprinkled throughout. The parking for the Village Grill will be reconfigured to kind of be centrally located over here. I'll be providing 45 spaces. And then the family center will have plenty of parking, 70 spaces situated throughout. The entrance right now to the Cold Springs Family Center is right here. So it's just the only, the only entry point is going to be moved a little bit farther north. So then you'll have basically four entry points, three along Village Parkway and then another one along Vilch Center Drive. Julie went over the average daily trips. The, the maximum PM peak hour trips are 71 is based on the report that was conducted along with this, this submittal. Just want to emphasize that this project meets with many of the policies within the Washoe County Master Plan and within the Cold Springs Area Plan. This, this is affordable by design as it gives a better, it, it's, a townhomes are typically more affordable than the, than the traditional, single family homes that are located in here. And I just want to step back real quick. I forgot to mention one little thing about the setbacks. So the reason why we are reducing the setbacks is just the tentative nature of a attached product. So with this, the lot is actually just going to be the actual unit itself. So that's why we are asking for zero foot setbacks on the side in the rear. And then you'll have your own eight front, eight foot front property that will, that will be able to maintain. Everything else will be, will be the common area. So that, that's why we need to have a reduction in the setbacks. Okay, sorry, let me just skip, just want to make sure I hit that. Again, this is allowed in the Cold Springs area plan. This is the neighborhood commercials regulatory zoning. We are asking for 12.9 units per acre, not 14. This hits the housing element because it provides a different product than the single family that is out in Cold Springs. So anybody who is, wants to still live in Cold Springs, but may not want to maintain a yard. This is kind of geared towards them. So Washoe County Planning Staff also determined that we can make all the findings, especially with the consistency of the master plan. The site is suitable, it's an infill development, all the infrastructure is in there. It is anticipated for commercial development when it, when the infrastructure was put in. And this is far less than any, than most commercial uses that could go on there today. So interview, this is our project and I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Are there any questions of, of the applicant on their presentation at this time? As I say, we will revisit this before it goes anywhere. I personally have a, a concern and I, and I went through the, the fire department's conditions, but the roadways in, into this project are two lane. And it's a three-story project. And I realize this is a tentative subdivision map case, but I would suggest that you really take a look at fire prevention and fire protection that far back off the highway and that far from a fire station. And that's just a comment. And that's all I have to say. Pat, would you, Commissioner Phillips, would you like to say something?
Yes, this is Pat Phillips. I kept hearing references to a town center and where its placement is. But at the same time, it seems to me, a town center is where people go to meet. It is more where they can get services that they need. And it is, this is turning that less commercial into a residential, which seems to change the nature of the neighborhood. And this worries me that this is in the center. I would have no problem with this at all if it were to one side and affected less of the neighborhood that's already established.
Thank you, Commissioner Phillips. Are there any, any other comments or questions for the applicant? Seeing none?
Chair Chesney?
Yes.
Sorry. Can the applicant address the questions that were in the RTC letter?
Oh, very good.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure which ones you're referring to. And I don't know if Paul Saleggi is on the meeting or not. He was the traffic engineer who wrote that report.
Okay, there's two additional questions on page two. Do you happen to know when that traffic report was performed?
It was performed along with, as soon as, right around the time we submitted. So I would imagine it was in September or November sometime this of last year, 2020.
Eric Chesney?
Yes.
Commissioner Doncic, that document that I'm talking to, that Kate was referring to, was dated December 15th of this, of 2020. So RTC, when they put this question out, it was in December 15th. So that's why I'm asking, was that, was there a follow-up where they answered?
But what page is that on, Francis?
It's in exhibit B, it's in exhibit B.
Oh, exhibit B, okay.
Exhibit B and RTC Transportation Commission's reply. And it's on page, the very top of page two.
So we don't have an answer to those, those questions then?
No, and I think, I think those are some pretty important questions. Just, you know, when you're talking traffic counts and then they're saying the volumes seem awfully low. I'd like to have a little bit more explanation on how or why they think the, the volumes are low. So it would just be nice if the traffic engineer was on.
This is Robert Jello, I'm the civil engineer. I did track down the traffic engineer, Paul Saleggi. Can we table this question 10 minutes and get back to it and discuss other items until Paul gets on the call?
So we still don't have the questions answered, right?
Right.
So I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to ask Commissioner Doncic and Commissioner Nelson, do you feel that, that these questions are some sort of a deal breaker?
I just think they need to be addressed. And if Paul's going to get on within 10 minutes.
Okay, so this is a tentative subdivision map case and I, and I'm sure that those questions will have to be answered as this goes through the process. So we will take note that those two questions need to be addressed for this thing's finalized. So do we have any further questions of the applicant? So do we have any further questions of the applicant? Seeing none, then I'm going to move on to public comment.
I'm sorry, Chair Chesney. This is Commissioner Chavilla check.
Yes, Commissioner Chavilla check.
Thank you. I'm sorry. It was Zoom. It's hard to unmute and ask and do all that. In, in terms of to the applicant, when, when we start using statements about that, you know, this is affordable housing and such, and I don't disagree with you and that it is generally in compliance with the Cold Springs Area Plan. The question that I have is that when we started addressing affordable housing, what, in, where do we come into? How do you factor in accessibility to public transportation? Because affordability and public transportation go hand in hand. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I just think I want to clarify that this is by the definition, this is not affordable housing where you have, you know, a certain bracket that is based on. This is going to be market value. So we're not, we're not saying this is affordable housing. We're saying typically it's, it's, it's based on the market value of a single-family home. It's typically more affordable by design. So I'm not, we're not claiming that it's affordable housing.
Okay, thank you. So we need to be cautionary in our statements then to, or in how we're discussing this is a, it's a, you know, a niche that fills a need. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners Villachek. That was delightful insight.
Mr. Chesney?
Commissioner Phillips? Was that you?
No, it's Julie. This is Julie Olander. I just wanted to, I did look back at my emails from the school district. I just wanted to clarify on that. There was a, there were two different emails I got and I apologize. I realized neither one of them got into your staff report and I'm, that was my oversight. I apologize for that. But I received one email and then I received another email with different numbers. And I should have, I tried to, I thought I clarified that, but I can't find the email that I asked that question about. So I apologize for that too. But their first email stated that there were going to be 22 students for elementary school, 12 for middle school and 11 for high school. So that's almost doubled what I showed in my staff report and also in my presentations. So I don't know, Commissioner Sevillacheck, if that gets you closer. But that's the, another email I got from them.
Well, and again, I, I, and you know, the housing, I mean, the numbers of school, it's just, these are being, in my opinion, being grossly under-reported. And it's with as many units as, that are here and the access for early-entry homes, for, you know, early families and such. I believe these numbers will be much higher. And just for reference, I mean, Mr. Hasty, you referred to it as Shaw Middle School. And Julie, even in your presentation, you said Shaw Middle School.
No.
This is Cold Springs Middle School.
My presentation, I said Cold, says Cold Springs in my presentation. No, I know it's Cold Springs. And I think that's even shown on the map. I showed where Cold Springs was, yeah. No, I know it's, I did make a mistake with the high school.
I, I think, I think that these are, this is, Chairman Chesney, I, I think that these are all good points, but I, I think we're getting in the weeds on this thing a little bit. In, in that this is the tentative subdivision map and this subdivision will go through a number of processes before the shovel ever hits the dirt. And I think that every one of these points is good. But I think we need to move this thing along a little bit. So if there are any other relevant questions, and I'm not trying to discourage anybody, but let's, let's move on with this thing. And let's take it to public comment and see what the public has to say. And then let's bring it back to the commission and let's mash the potatoes. So I would request any public comment. You have three minutes for each speaker.
Chair Chesney, I have a handful of emails that were received by Julie Olander that I was planning to read into the record. I do see that several of these individuals whose emails I have are also on my list with their hands raised for public comment. So what I'm going to do is I'll kind of go through the, go through the names, give the folks a chance to let me know if they would rather speak themselves for the three minutes or have me read the email for the three minutes.
I think that's an excellent idea. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to start with Blair Speth. And I actually have an email from Allison Speth, but she's 10 years old and I'm, I'm assuming there might be a relation.
Yes, indeed. It's fine if you enter both of our emails into public comment, but I just had something to add. And I believe it was Commissioner Phillips that brought up the idea of the Village Town Center being a place where people go to gather. I mean, are people supposed to go gather in people's front yards? When there is no setback, 10 feet maybe? So I'm wondering if we're all going to go over and gather and set up some barbecues in people's front yards. Another thing I want to, I want to note is that one thing you don't see in the rendition of those drawings is the mountains. You know, a lot of us moved out here because we liked the mountain views. I'm going to walk out my front yard and see a two-story building instead of the mountain. You know, and that's something that, that we really think is important out here. And I also do agree with, and I think it was Commissioner Phillips, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm in full agreement with her that I don't think this fits into the neighborhood whatsoever. There's nothing around here that looks remotely like that. And I don't see where people are going to just gather in people's front yards when they're eight feet deep. You know, I mean, what are they going to do? They're going to go to the grill and then go take some food and eat in somebody's front yard. I mean, it just, it's so out of character for this area that, I mean, I really can't even believe that this is being considered. And I just wanted to make that known. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I will, unless Allison Speth wants to speak herself instead, I will go ahead and for three minutes read Allison's comment into the record. Okay. All right, sounds good. Hi, my name is Allison and I'm 10 years old. Personally, I think that the idea to put apartments in Cold Springs is just plain dumb. I'm concerned about traffic safety as well. First of all, there is a park right next to this build site as well as a middle school teaching grades five through eight. There are lots of very young kids who play at the school and the park. And of course, nobody wants to look out their front window just to see a bunch of three-story buildings. And according to my family's research, people would travel in and out about 850 times per day. There are also lots of kids playing outside daily and kids might even have to walk through the apartment complex to get where they need to go. Now I know what you're thinking, there can't possibly be kids playing outside every day, especially in this weather. But I go outside with my friends at least once a day. And every time I ride in my car to go somewhere, I see at least one person walking or hanging out with their friends. I hope you don't end up building apartments in our small community. And honestly, I don't think this would benefit anybody in any way. I am just managing the list over here, so just a moment. Okay. And then the next email that I have to read is from Jacob Hemphill. And I do not see a Jacob with a raised hand, so I'm going to go ahead and read this one as well. My name is Jacob Hemphill and I live at 18325 Beechwood Court in Cold Springs, right in front of the proposed new subdivision. I've lived here for 17 years and own my home. I love it out here for the peace and quiet and being able to enjoy the pace of life out here. Now with the proposed 111 townhouses right near me, that's not the type of community I want to live in or raise my kids. I bought my house in a master plan community that did not have townhouses planned in it. Therefore, I'm 100% against it. And if it gets approved, more than likely, I will leave Cold Springs. Okay, and then I have, I have one more here from Diana Berlin Smith. She doesn't have a hand raised, but she is, she is on, so I'm going to unmute her and, and just ask if she would prefer that I read this or if she would prefer to give comment of her own.
That's fine.
Okay. I, I think I spoke a little bit earlier and that the information I sent to you was just further clarification data for you guys to look at. But I did speak earlier and I spoke specifically about the traffic impact report at the beginning of this. Do you not recall that?
I, I do. You just have an opportunity to make public comment at each item. And so
Oh, I did not know that.
If you would like three minutes at this point in time.
I will, I'll reread it for those that didn't hear it.
Okay, then I'll turn the timer for you. Sounds good.
You guys can keep all the data in that other one because that tells you what I did and who I spoke to. Specifically, you know, and the traffic impact report was just talking about the traffic and how many vehicles were going to be, and how many extra additional vehicles were going to be generated going up and down Village Parkway. When, when everyone was set notice, they only sent it within, people within what, 300 feet of the development that you were proposing. But they did not address this type of impact. And what I was addressing in that email was it specifically impacts, I counted the homes, 115 homes, 15 homes that are identified that it backed that road. And there's another five homes, you know, that there's not, nothing in between to mitigate the noise. And what specifically they didn't address was the road noise. And road noise is something you get from a busy road. And with that 851 additional vehicles, that is additional. What it does is it's noise that takes away our enjoyment of our backyards and our, and basically our outside space. We want these homes to enjoy our outdoor spaces. That's why we have larger lots out here. The road noises recognized are both Fannie Mae and Freddie and FHA in their guidelines. And it specifically says that appraisers must analyze, report and location factors. To this, and in there, this location, they said you have to look at, and the first one they list is road noise. To this fact, I also did a poll of appraisers. 70% of the appraisers that I polled so that they would mark this location as a burst, therefore to defect value, only 1% said the locations with road noise would remain neutral, meaning no value difference. I also surveyed realtors in local market area. And I called the Nevada Real Estate Commissioner too. Everyone stayed that properties subject to road noise are both affected by in-markability and sell price. That means if you have two properties and someone has a choice in their same properties, they're going to choose a property that does not have road noise. Again, this was never addressed in the traffic impact report. So this does impact, the minimum that I say is 115 people that back this roadway. And this is the major egress from out of this development. So, and nobody addressed, they don't care. And how does that impact do when you have a, a property that has this marketability and value is what it's going to affect? So it's going to make my home possibly go down in value in a stable market. And that is not going to make a lot of people happy. Thank you for listening again.
Thank you. Do we have any other further public comment?
We, we do. Give me just a moment here.
Okay, let's hear it.
All right, so we have Taylor MCC. And Taylor, when I gave you permission to speak here, if you could also provide your last name.
My name is actually Christina Penna. This was my daughter's account. But I'm the homeowner and I want to actually address the person that is proposing this and wanting this. And the reason is, is because I'm the homeowner. And you're saying that the HOA will cover it. In actuality, am I, an existing homeowner, going to be covering this cost? When I bought my house, I noticed there is two roads in. You're not building more roads in over the 395. We're still going to have those two roads. This was always in my idea when I bought and was told this was going to be a town center with commercial area. And that's what it is considered on the planning map, which I saw. So in my eyes, as a homeowner, I wasn't thinking there was going to be condos and apartments. I'm thinking we're going to have residential's like the Village Grill that all of us love to visit and the tea shop. This is not affordable housing. This, these houses are going to not be able to be afforded by a single parent. It's still going to be a two-parent home. So in no way are you helping out a market that's already good. You're lining your pockets. The driveway of this proposal is on the fence line of our middle school. Our kids will have to walk through there in certain cases to get home. And you cannot ensure the safety of who's buying those houses or who is renting those houses. And are we going to have a cap on the number of renters? Because that also affects our property value. You know, you should have actually asked all of the residents and homeowners more questions. Because if you're adding more cost to our HOA, then you're costing us money. And that's not fair to anybody. You're lowering our property values and raising our costs. That's not fair. Also, fire safety. Heaven forbid we have a fire at that place. How are we going to get this extra traffic plus all of the people that already live here out safely on two roads? When a fire department won't be able to stop it because of the amount of time it's going to take to get the services here. Period. Also, what happens with a kidnapping? We're going to have longer to get services here, but you put more people here. Therefore, it's going to be harder also to tell who it is. You need to also realize that the people that live out here do not want to live like we're in a city. And we want a town center, not a residential center. Thank you.
Next, we have Beck. Again, when I give you permission to speak, if you could provide your first and last name.
Hello, it is, my name is Rebecca Marko, M A R K O.
Thank you.
And everybody who's spoken has brought up a bunch of really good points. But I wanted to hit on a few others I haven't heard about is Cold Springs is what's called a food desert. We don't have a grocery store with any fresh foods or anything like that within 15 to 20 minutes away from us. And so when you're going to cram in even more people, that's going to actually create more drives out of Cold Springs to go to the grocery store, to go to the post office, to go, because we don't have any of those services. We're severely lacking in commercial area. When we saw that this was commercial, we expected a nice like little downtown thing. Like if you think of like Mayberry Landings, you have a coffee shop there, you have a yogurt shop there. Some are for us in this community to go. We don't have anything. We have Family Dollar and 7-Eleven. And that's about all. You can't go there and get fresh vegetables or anything like that. And so that's a big concern is taking away the one area that we had that could have potentially had a small market or a little coffee shop. We have the Village Grill and to call this a mixed commercial area or a town center is kind of a slap in our face. You're taking this area that we honestly were expecting to become something as a nice community gathering, a community area. We're going to cram in 111 houses and, or condos, I should say, 11 houses. Another concern is multiple, I've lived out here for a while and probably a couple times a year. We have cars flying down Village Parkway that crash into the yards. And thankfully, we have large enough yards of, that back up to Village that the cars don't actually go into the houses. It just breaks down the fence. Looking at these drawings where these apartment, or the condos are going to be is scary. I can imagine a car flying right into that and that's just nerve-wracking. And we've actually had cars jump on that curb in that area. Actually, a couple of years ago, there was a drunk driver Actually, a couple years ago, there was a drunk driver that hit the a big light outside of the corner of Village and Village Center. And that would have been a condo that that car would have flown into. We don't have a safety area. Those homes are gonna be at risk. They don't match with our area. There's gonna be noise. There's a bunch of children that cross that crosswalk. Because those fifth and sixth graders go to the middle school, they have to walk two miles to school. And so in the mornings and after school's out, that area is covered in kids. When you're gonna be throwing in many more vehicles into the area that these kids have to go, it's gonna be really nerve wracking. So please consider the safety and also that we are kind of off in our own little secluded area and they're taking away our one and only commercial area for houses. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. That was very well spoken.
Yes. I'm, I'm just managing my list. I'll be there in just a moment. Okay, the next I have here is a Jennifer. And again, first and last name, please.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. For the record, my name is Jennifer Sullivan. I am a resident of Cold Springs. I live on Date Wood Court, which is about a block and a half away from the proposed site for these condo townhomes, whatever you wanna call them. I have lived out here for seven years. And we bought out there because it is not in our city, you know, cluster, people-filled area. We enjoy the quiet. We enjoy, you know, the less traffic. We enjoy less people. And we like the open space. I, I'm really concerned about safety. We live a block and a half away from the site and I have several children who attend schools. There will be probably one kid in every single school out in the North Valleys this coming school year. And for them to have to walk through, you know, condensed, built-up area is concerning. Not only that, but Beck has also mentioned the safety of the roadway through there with the door right on the street. We have had cars slide off the road into people's fences, into people's homes. We've had kids hit. So to add 111 units, which could possibly be, you know, upwards of 200 people with numerous children, including ones who are already established, you know, walking in the park and to the schools. That's concerning because we don't want any more, you know, incidents than there have already been. And I also don't want to look out across the street and see two or three-story buildings instead of the view or instead of the park. It feels more like a prison rather than an open space, which is what I think it should be. But neither here nor there, the point is, the people, you know, trying to build up this area are not building it up for the community. They're building it up for profit. And I don't think that that is right or fair to the people who have bought out here prior to this being here. And that's really about all that I have to say. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I believe, I believe that we are done with public comment. I'm just taking one last look here. Okay. Last, last opportunity for anyone to put up their hand if they would like to make public comment. Okay, I don't see any.
Seeing no further public comment, let's move on to commission questions of staff, applicant, or members of the public. Are there questions of staff or applicant to start with? Commissioner Ruus, speak up.
Thank you. Excuse me, I choked on my own comment. No, I have a question.
Take that shoe out of your mouth.
Yeah, right. I'm used to it. It chews easily. This is, part of this is asking for a special use permit to allow the the attached single family in the neighborhood commercial regulatory zone. What would be the regulatory zone normally for attached single-family residences?
It's in your I guess that's a question for Julie. By all means, Julie.
Julie Olander with Planning and Building. So attached is allowed, and let me just look really quick for you to be, speak specifically. So it's allowed in certain areas, however, in neighborhood commercial is required, especially use permit. So the attached is allowed in LDS. It's, well, it's allowed with, it's, oh yes, it's allowed in LDS, it's allowed in MDS. It's allowed in HDS, LDU, MDU and HDU. And it requires a special use permit in NC. And it's also allowed in GRA. And then it's permitted in PR, which is Parks and Rec with administrative permit. So there are some places where it's allowed. And, but however, in the NC area, you do have to have a special use permit.
Thank you. I have some further question. I, since this was done about eight months ago now, that they asked for it to be changed. And at that time, I don't remember any comments about building residential units. It was all for a, a, a central unit. And they talked about having, it seems to me, and I admit, you know, it's fuzzy with the, the COVID idiocy, that they talked about having maybe a small grocery store or a 7-Eleven type of store, et cetera. And now they've come back and they're changing it. They were saying then there was no mention of any residential activity. And so this, to me, is striking me as bait and switch. And I just, am I wrong? Did they mention it then?
You know, my recollection is there was not any specific use. They were looking at some kind of mixed use with residential and some commercial. But at that time, it was a zone change in a master plan amendment. So at that time, they didn't have to specify what they were gonna move forward with.
I'm not saying they specified. I'm saying they sort of implied or said it could be this and that and the other thing. But I don't remember any residential at the time. Could be that my memory is failing. And why don't we change the, the zoning so that this fits into the zoning? Why should we have a special use permit?
Well, the special use permit is because if they choose to do attached residential, they need a special use permit for that. And then the Cold Springs area plan requires them to get a special use permit if they're going to do this type of housing. And then also they want to change the building set, replacement step standards. So both, all three of those things require special use permits to make those kind of changes.
And the setbacks, et cetera, seem to have just be a starting point for the developers to change. Thank you. I appreciate that, Julie. You work hard and I appreciate all your efforts. Do not take my comments personal, personally. I'm just trying to figure things out. Thank you.
Can I just address the, the zone change that we came in with, just real quick? Just to add some to that. With the NC zoning designation, we wanted this to be a mixed use. So whatever, whatever there is with residential and commercial, the commercial area that is existing there is a flex space. And there is room for other commercial entities to come in. And so when we went through the zone change, we have to prove that it was for, this, this area is able to serve any use that could come in. So that was our argument with the zone change.
Thank you.
Your Chesney.
Commissioner Svalicich.
Thank you so much. So for a point of clarification, either to the applicant's representative or the applicant or even planning staff. Since this is a development within the existing development, and then there's within the town center, the references to those zero setbacks and the, and the transit, the traffic patterns and such. Correct me if I'm wrong, but as I read through the plan, that, that traffic pattern is with, right, directly within that development, not out into the general areas surrounding that development. Am I correct?
Yeah, and we could have our engineering representative step in if I, if I say anything wrong. But so those setbacks, what, when we designed this, we used the actual setbacks that are already outlined in the NC from the, from the property line. So the, we're not putting the, the residents eight feet on the property line, like along Village Parkway or anything like that. Where I, I believe we're actually using the 15-foot, which is two code in NC. The, the only time we're using that setback is because we have to lot the townhomes in order to, to meet those setbacks. We have to have zero. Everywhere else along the property and in between the buildings, we are meeting the fire codes and the setbacks of the NC zoning designation.
Thank you. And then, so again, with the roads that are, that you showed in your rendition is that that traffic flow would be just within that area. It wouldn't be people going in and out of that. It would be specific to that town center, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are questions answered here?
Your Chesney, I see that our traffic, the traffic person is online now.
And? You, you have a specific question for?
At the traffic questions.
It was Commissioner Doncic and Commissioner Nelson that had specific questions for Mr. Salegi regarding the RTC's document, where on their page two of their document, they put out two more questions that were dated after the traffic report was done. So I wanted to know where they, did, did they come back and answer them somewhere in there that I didn't understand them?
This is Paul Salegi. I prepared the traffic study. I'm here at home. I don't have a copy of the traffic study with me right now, but I have gone to the staff report and pulled off those two RTC questions. The questions deal with concerns about, I guess they've challenged our traffic study, a distribution of trips. The number of trips that would be going down Crystal Canyon there on the east side of the development. We had about 70% that direction and 30% to Border Town. And, and I guess I would tell you the way that we arrived at that split, the split that we developed in terms of folks going to the west and to the east. We did a large master overview traffic study for Woodland Village within the last year or so. At that time, we studied all 20-some phases of the subdivision and looked at warrants and final improvements that were needed for the closeout of that big subdivision. So we had extensive traffic data collected there and we had a good feel on how traffic split out there in the Cold Springs area. Now, when they came in with these new units, we had the benefit of all of those intersections. And this was still quite a large intersection, or quite a large study with numerous key intersections. And so, so my response on the first, the first question of RTCs is they were wondering the, the logic that we used, but it was based on extensive information, 20-some phases of, of Woodland Village subdivision phases, how they split the two interchanges out on 395. So I think I have a substantial engineering evidence that our, our, our distribution was, was accurate. And then in terms of the question, their next, they asked about warrants. We looked at warrants at the Village Parkway intersection of White Lake and then also Crystal Canyon, that intersection of White Lake Parkway. We reviewed both of those intersections at the end of the 20-some phases of Woodland Village. And then we reevaluated those intersections with this traffic. Still, the levels of service were appropriate and still the warrants or as traffic signals are not met at either of those locations. So, so I'd be happy to discuss further aspects of those if you want. But myself, I feel like these matters have been addressed thoroughly and, and adequately.
All right, Paul. This is Commissioner Doncic. Thank you very much for that explanation.
Okay, do we, do we have any more questions? Are we, do we have unanswered questions? I I guess Julie, what, what was the CAB's recommendation? What did the Citizens Advisory Board have to say about this thing?
They were unanimously in favor of the, of the, of the development, of the tentative map and special use permits. They had some questions, but at the end, they approved it. They recommended approval, excuse me.
Thank you. Okay, and I guess from my own information, and this could be maybe even from legal counsel. Do, is our acceptance of this tonight, acceptance of all the engineering reports and staff reports by the developer? Or are these available for future review as this goes through the permitting and the building process? Maybe Trevor or even counsel?
If I may, Mr. Chair, this is Trevor Lloyd. Maybe I'm a little confused by your question. What you would be, if, if approved, you would be approving the the plan, the tentative map and special use permit. It would still require final design and final approval of a, basically a final map. And all of the associated conditions would have to be met, including additional reports and studies required as, as conditions of approval.
Great, Trevor. Thank you. That's exactly what I was, what I was looking for. So you're not all that confused. How about that? Okay, so do we have any further questions from the commission? From staff, the app, or applicants? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. I'm bringing it back to a call for any further discussion amongst the commission. And now's the time for us to discuss it amongst ourselves publicly. And so let's have Commissioner Svalicich.
And I'm gonna turn to Mr. Lloyd and to legal counsel. And I know that Ms. Olander has, has added the conditions in there. But in terms of hearing from the public comment and tonight of the residents that live in Cold Springs, can there be a condition, and I, I'm asking for clarification. But in terms of, my experience has been when we have had these presentations and they discuss it, and Stonegate is the one that comes first to mind. Is, Stonegate did disclose in their multiple presentations to Planning Commission and Regional Planning Commission, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, is that each development will be turned over to an investor or turned over to another entity? So is there a commitment from, can we ask for a condition that, that these are owner-occupied, not investor? from, can we ask for a condition that, that these are owner occupied, not investor purchased and then resold at this level? I don't know if we can, if that, so I'm just asking.
I'd like to address that if I can. This is Eric Casey, the applicant's representative. And I don't know if the applicant can describe this a little bit more, but I believe on all of their developments, there is a rule that when you first purchase the home, you have to live in the, you can only be, you have to live in the house for a full year. So it's not like you can go buy five of these all at once and then have that be your investment.
Hi, Commissioner Chesney, this is Peter Listener. Can I make a comment on that?
Yes.
Yes. So that's exactly how we've done it in all of Woodland Village, and we're happy to commit to that again. Absolutely. And I also wanted to just give my phone number and email address for any of the folks out there that would like to talk to me personally about the project. I know you have concerns. It's 775-813-0046. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Peter. I've, I've got most of my, my questions answered. This is, like I say, that me giving Peter authorization was a real exception to where we're at at the station in, in, in the process. The applicant, in my opinion, and I'm discussing this with the commission, is that they've met all the requirements of the master plan, the Cold Springs plan. And as I see the findings, I cannot find a finding that I can personally vote against. So I, my heart goes out to the folks that bought the single family residences in Woodland Village and the different increments. Possibly, they didn't follow, and I can't blame them for the fact that they possibly don't have the time to follow the different zoning changes and, and the process that's going on for over a year on this thing. But this, this has sort of been on the map for, I don't know, six, eight years, something like that. And so we could shoot the horse 100 times, but it's still, in my opinion, a dead horse. So that's my comment. And I welcome any other comments. And yes.
Thank you. This is Commissioner Svelicak. Thank you. What I, in terms of, what I look to is how an application addresses the area plans. And what I look to is what the CAB response is. And in terms of when, and also to the community that's watching and my fellow commissioners and such, is being able to serve on both regional and, and Washoe County Planning Commission and having the opportunity to go through updates and stuff, and looking at other communities, where communities have thrived is when they've had that, that mixed use or that mixed housing availability. So I appreciate the planning staff taking the effort to really identify that this is within the area plan, which was developed by the community, and that the CAB fully supports it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Phillips. Unmute your, unmute your screen, please. Thank you.
There. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Pat Phillips. I think the issue that I'm worried about is the issuance is not detrimental. And I've seen too many aspects of this that are proving detrimental. So I'm weighing out positive, how it's going to affect the community. But then again, at the same time, what is detrimental that needs to be corrected?
And is that it?
That's it.
Okay, so we can't, at this stage in the game, we cannot, to the best of my knowledge, amend the agendized item. So therefore, if there are no, if there's no further discussion, I'm going to call for a motion on this. Do we have a motion?
Chair Chesney.
Commissioner Svelicak.
Yes, in terms of, and then to legal counsel, is that can we put, do we need to separate these as the special, the tentative map and then the special use, or can they be done together? Excuse me.
That is really up to you, as far as your preference. If you'd like to make a motion for both, or you could make them separately. There's no legal requirement for that.
I'd like to make a suggestion and that we, that we make it in one, one motion to approve or deny both the special use permit and the tentative map.
Mr. Chair, this is Trevor. I would recommend that you read both motions, and then if that's your purview, take action.
Absolutely.
Chair Chesney.
Commissioner Svelicak.
I'm prepared, I'm prepared to make a motion and just again, preface, my, my action here is making the motion is because this is in compliance with the area plan, where all the community had input into the community, the area plan, and that the CAB supported this unanimously.
Wyoming.
With reference to item 9A tentative subdivision map case number WTM 20-005, Woodland Village Town Center, I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the informed information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing.
Does Cold Springs have a CAB member? I've been trying to ask this. I don't think Cold Springs has a CAB member.
Excuse me, sir. Whoever you are, you're out of order.
I understand I'm out of order, but you guys bring up, we don't have a member.
Carry on, Commissioner Svelicak.
Thank you. And just to address that is that North Valleys Area CAB is open to all residents of the North Valleys. So I'll pick up, I'll try to find out where I was. And contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approved with the conditions included in exhibit A to this matter and tentative subdivision map case number WTM 20-005 for Woodland Village North LLC, having made all 10 findings in accordance with the Washoe County Code Section 110.608.25. And I further move, after giving reason consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approved with conditions included in exhibit A to this matter, special use permit case number WSUP 20-0021 for Woodland Village North LLC, having made all findings in accordance with the Washoe County Code Section 110.810.30.
Chair Chesney, Commissioner Doncic, I motion to second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Svelicak and a second by Commissioner Doncic. Any discussion on the motions? Okay, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, designate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, then I'm going to call for a roll call vote.
Thank you.
Katie, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Of course. Larry Chesney.
Aye.
Francine Doncic.
Aye.
Thomas Bruce.
Nay.
Sarah Svelicak.
Aye.
Kate Nelson.
Aye.
Larry Payton.
Aye.
And Patricia Phillips.
Nay.
Okay, we have one, two, three, four, five ayes and two nays. The motion passes. Okay, we're going to move on. We have one more item on the agenda. A variance case number WPVAR 20-007, Rusk West and Rear South Yard setback reduction. We don't normally, we don't, we're very seldom hear a variance case on the planning commission. So I believe that it's, it's very appropriate for everybody to pay attention to the presentation from, well, I guess I'll ask Secretary Lloyd to read the, the motion or the item.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, for possible action hearing and discussion to approve a variance to reduce the required building setbacks for an agricultural building as a main use from 100 feet to 25 feet on the side, west side, and from 100 feet to 16 feet on the rear side or south side. Representing Washoe County in this case is Senior Planner, Roger.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. For the record, Roger Pelham with Washoe County Planning. I'm going to take just a moment here and attempt to share my screen.
While you're doing that, do we have any disclosures by any commissioners, ethics or ex parte communications? Hearing done. Go ahead, Roger. Thank you.
Very well. Can you see my presentation?
Yes, sir, we can.
Wonderful. This is variance case number WPVAR 20-0007, and it is a request for the reduction in both the side and rear setbacks. Oh, whoops. Sorry. Okay, so the request is to reduce the side and rear setback for construction of an agricultural building as a main use. The reduction from the south, or I'm sorry, from the west would be from 100 feet to 25 feet, and on the south, from 100 feet to 16 feet. This constitutes a reduction of 75 feet on the west and 84 feet on the south. Pretty simple math there. This is somewhat unusual. The planning commission does not typically review standalone variances. Occasionally, the planning commission will see variances in relationship to perhaps some major special use permits or larger developments, but really not this type of standalone variance. The planning commission certainly has the authority to decide these types of, of cases. But again, typically, these would go to the Board of Adjustment. However, up until really this month, the Board of Adjustment only met every, basically every even numbered month, particularly in the second half of the year. This applicant was anxious and demanded that we take in their application on the cycle to be heard by the planning commission in January rather than waiting another month. Again, because there's no prohibition, though it's not typically done. So again, somewhat rare, but that's why we're here this evening. The findings for a variance are very distinct from other types of applications. Various findings really apply to the characteristics of the subject site, whereas perhaps other types of applications really deal more with the interaction of the development with the surrounding area and with the site itself. I'd like to point out that these findings do not apply to the convenience of the applicant. Again, this is based on the land form itself. This particular case is located in Washoe Valley. You can see the vicinity map here. Here to the right side would essentially be Washoe Lake, William Burt Road, and then the subject site. Here's an overhead photo again, showing the lake, the freeway, and the subject site. This site plan shows the reductions that are requested. This is, this darker rectangle here is the agricultural building that is proposed by the applicant. And then the larger box surrounding it would be a graded and, an area with some base material brought in surrounding it. Again, showing 25 foot setback to the west and a 16 to the south that is requested. And here we have, again, a bit of a blow up of that with, again, more detail. Are you seeing an elevation to the proposed structure at this point?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Just want to make sure I'm on the same page. This is the agricultural building that is proposed by the applicant. Here's the side elevation and then the front, which really doesn't look like much there. Again, variance findings are very different than others. There must be a hardship, that is to say, special circumstances that result in a hardship. And those special circumstances are limited to only those things that are called out in state law and then essentially verbatim into the Washoe County Code. Those are exceptional narrowness, shalliness, or shape of specific piece of property by reason of exceptional topographic conditions or other extraordinary and exceptional situation or condition of the property. And again, I would emphasize that this has to do with the physical characteristics of the property itself. Should those special circumstances be identified? Well, then we also have some additional findings that need to be made. But again, this is really by far the most important part of the analysis. This parcel of land is Zone GR, general rural. Typically, that's a 40 acre parcel. This is an existing nonconforming parcel that's two and a half acres in size. When we have a situation of this type, we actually evaluate and apply the standards of a parcel of that size, the regulatory zone for the parcel of that size. In this case, that's high density rural. High density rural is one dwelling unit per two and a half acres and has a minimum lot size of two acres. So this parcel is consistent with the HDR zone. Code tells us that's what we use for our analysis, and that's what we will do going forward. So I'd like to look individually at each one of the possible special circumstances. Exceptional narrowness, again, for the HDR zone, 150 feet in width is the minimum lot dimension. This parcel is approximately 515. This parcel is not exceptionally narrow. Again, exceptional shalliness. The minimum lot dimension is 150 feet. This is approximately 189 feet in depth. This parcel is not exceptionally shallow. Exceptional shape, as you can see here, this is essentially rectangular. This is a very normal shape. The shape itself does not create a hardship. This is not a special circumstance. Exceptional topography. The parcel itself is essentially flat. It only falls about two feet from west to east. So this is just about as flat as they come. As you can see, there is a little stock pond there or little pond on the eastern portion. But again, this does not contain exceptional topographic conditions. When we look for exceptional topographic conditions, we would be looking for things like steep slopes, ravines, perhaps a stream that runs through the middle, something that forces the, the variance that the applicant might be seeking. None of those are demonstrated here. Extraordinary and exceptional situation or condition of the property and or location of the surroundings. Now, the applicant has pointed out that there are easements on many other parcels of land, particularly those that are also owned by the applicant. Easements on other properties do not create a special circumstance on this property. Easements on other properties do not create a special circumstance on this property. They also point out that there is high groundwater in this area. There may be high groundwater in this area, but that's neither exceptionary nor extraordinary because that's true of particular, basically all of the parcels in that area, and that condition does not force the reduction in setback. In fact, the applicant has provided this graphic here that shows where the desired agricultural building can be placed on the subject site in accordance with all of the required setbacks. I will note that these are large setbacks, and this is true for agricultural buildings as a main use only. If there were an established main use, a house or something of that nature, we would be looking at a different, a different set of standards. But for a main use standalone agricultural building, 100 feet from all property lines is required. Further, the applicant asserts that the development code is inappropriately written and believes that perhaps this provision, the structure shall be located at least 100 feet from the property line, any street or highway, a public park, or school. That, that should not apply to any property line, but only a property line that has a street or a highway or a public school. That's not, not correct. The code's clear. It's, it's from any property line. And the, the fact of the matter is, sometimes, although rare, streets may not be on a separate parcel. They may in fact be on an easement. So this does require a setback from a street for a valid reason. And now, public notice, this did go to 82 affected property owners. I have received a number of comments, but I believe there's some substantial confusion in the area regarding a dog kennel. And, and so none of the comments that I received actually dealt with this variance request. This was heard by the Citizen Advisory Board, who did vote to recommend approval of the variance request. I would note, however, that the Citizen Advisory Board did not address the findings of fact. This was sent to all of the appropriate agencies for review, and essentially we got very few comments. That's very common in variances because variances are really limited to the purview of the planning department, engineering, health. Many other agencies really have no interest in standards that are primarily planning, like setbacks. Now, I'd like to get on to the remainder of the required findings against special circumstances we have dealt with. I do not believe that this finding can be made. The applicant has demonstrated that the ag building can be constructed on the subject site within the required setbacks. Further, the applicant stated during the Citizen Advisory Board, meaning that they own several other parcels around there, it is certainly impossible that they may be able to do some reversions to acreage, that is to say, combine parcels and perhaps reconfigure such that they can put a, the agricultural building in a more desirable location to them. Again, that is for their convenience, that is not a hardship. No detriment. I do not believe that this finding can be made. The detriment is to affected natural resources, or more importantly, in this particular case, impair the intent and purpose of the development code. Now, in this case, variances are really only meant to be granted when the special circumstances, when that extraordinary hardship can be shown. In this case, granting the variance without demonstrating that hardship, that's those special circumstances, would impair the intent of the code. Special privileges, this finding also cannot be made. Again, when you grant a variance for a reduction in setbacks, when you cannot make the findings that there are in fact special circumstances applicable to the land, that grants a special privilege to this applicant that is inconsistent with the limitations on surrounding properties. And again, those special circumstances are required to be identified by both Nevada revised statutes and Washoe County Code. Use authorized, this finding can be made. The applicant can, seeks to construct an agricultural building, that's perfectly fine. In fact, they can do it on the subject site within all of this typical required setbacks. And effect on a military installation. This finding is not applicable. There are no military installations within the area that was required to be noticed for this request. With that, I am recommending denial based on the lack of any special circumstances applicable to the property, and I am available for any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you, Roger. Are there any questions to Roger at this time? As, as always, we will revisit this after we go through the rest of the process. So I hear none. Do we have, does the applicant have a representative or the applicant have a presentation?
It's the applicant. I'm Dave Selgrove for the record, and the, and the applicant's representative, and we also have Bob Rusk, who is the applicant. I'd like to have Bob say a few words, and then I will then share my screen and go into a presentation.
Members of the Commission, thank you for taking the time in, on this evening to consider my objection to the staff's presentation. I understand the staff's position. The letter of the law is as he describes, and I have no problem with that. The difference is, and that's why I'm appealing to you, I served on the Nevada Land Conservancy Original Board of Directors 25 years ago, and I learned why Nevada Land Conservancy, what they did to support the mission of preserving land and open space. I was able to buy 47 acres adjacent to Wilson Commons Park. Wilson Commons Park took up 25 acres, 10 lots, building lots, two and a half acres each, that the county wanted to build a park on that land, but they couldn't do it unless the balance of the Pedrolly Ranch, which was part of the original development going back in the last century, was somebody else would take because they didn't want the addition of 47 acres. I knew the estate, they trusted me. I had no money, but they said they would sell the balance of the land to me on a note and deed of trust, and that's how I ended up with the 47 acres. The 47 acres is made up of 14 different building sites. My wife and I, that are very much involved in Washoe Valley and to preserve open space, having worked 14 years on the largest ranch in the valley, 2,000 acres, which encompasses the entire north end of the valley. For 14 years, we worked with the Nevada Land Conservancy. Winters Ranch in open space. We got $50 million to buy the property from sale of BLM land in Clark County. And from there, our two U.S. Senators allowed some of that money, 50 million to be exact, to purchase that 2,000 acres, thereby defeating the proposed 1,000 unit subdivision that was going on that land. So that was my introduction to working with the Nevada Land Conservancy, both serving on the board and then getting that job done with their very expert expertise. So I ended up with the 47 acres. My wife and I decided that in conjunction with the county parks that had eliminated 10 building sites, that we were willing to do a easement, conservation easement, on our 14 building sites, thereby walking away from several million dollars in value. In doing that, we felt appropriate because we have five beautiful ponds on our lake. We have 250 species of birds that come and go on that land. We had, we were in a position to put that easement on there, and we did it happily. And so by doing that, all we used the land for, with the exception of an acre and a half parcel for a future home site, which is at the end of Nicky Lane, and then down by the freeway, this two and a half acres, I was able to purchase after the easement was put on, so I can do anything I want with that land. But that ties in with the entire 47 acres in that I irrigate, surface irrigate, have fully water righted all of that land, and I grow prime horse hay. We put up several thousand bales and sell it to not only my beloved wife, who has a couple of horses that eat some of it, but to several of her customers. And that's what I do with the land, including this two and a half acres. But I also have $150,000 worth of farm equipment that sits out in that not so friendly weather of West Washoe Valley, and I wanted simply to get a shed, six bays in this case, that would allow me to keep my equipment under cover. The, I'll, I'll close with this remark. The idea of moving my shed in the middle of this two and a half acres is totally absurd. I can show you, because I irrigate the entire acreage and cut hay off of it. I will show you any number of sheds and barns in Washoe Valley. There isn't one of them that sits in the middle of an irrigated pasture. I conclude my remarks.
Now, I need to figure out how to do my share screen. Do I have to make a request? No, I think I can just share. Let me make sure that I've got the right one there. Stop share. And let me start. Where are you? Do. Slide show, there we go.
But you had it momentarily was the correct one.
Did it come, did it actually come up?
It did.
Would you do me a favor and let me know if you're not seeing the whole screen? I'm going to try and get it to share. I noticed that Rogers was a little bit off. Go back to this and do the share screen, and I'm going to try and pick the right one here. You should be seeing like an all green slide that has the title of the project on it and variance request with at the bottom. Are you seeing all of that?
Not yet, Dave, but.
Oh, sorry. Now, are you seeing that?
Yes.
It's good.
Okay, good. I appreciate that. I want to start off, I typically don't try and read off things too much, but I came up with one thing that I really wanted to impart to you, because you don't hear, hear variance requests very often. codes are generally written as a one glove fits all type of document. Unfortunately, when trying to create rules that meet and appropriately address every situation, there are exceptions make sense. We believe this to be one of those situations. The variance process provides an appropriate and helpful tool to show where there may be some code weaknesses or unintended consequences. With that, I'll go into the presentation. There we go. So to set you in, Roger, Roger had a good aerial map, but it's kind of gives you a perspective view of where this property is located. You've driven by it many, many times, whether on the old highway or the new highway. It's all, this is out in an area that is all agriculture. It's agricultural for a reason. There, there are flooding and high water table issues out in the area, and I'll get into that a little bit more later. Roger showed these before, but what I want to impart to you on this, this is an 11 foot three inch tall building. It'll sit on, sit on piers at the bottom, but the actual structure itself, 11, 3, it's going to be under 12 feet, and that will become important later. It's a small building. It's 864 total square feet, it's 72 by 12 in terms of its dimensions. So Roger went through the legal findings and explained that this comes out of NRS, and I, I agree, this does come out of NRS, but I firmly believe that finding one can be made, the shallowness, and I'll go through why I believe that, contrary to Roger's review, and also that finding three on this can also be made. And the key part of this, I have both of those underlined, this can be made. Second one, topography, it's flat. But the third one, keep in mind too, these are all or situations. These are not, you have to make every one of these. If you make one of these, you can make this finding. The surrounding and locations, I'll go through, I believe we can make that. Though, what I want to do is take a look at what applies to this, this code, code item that we're requesting for a variance from. This, it rules everything, every rural zoning designation, that's general rural, all the way up to high density rural. And then it also applies to low density suburban, which is a one acre lot. But that's where this coverage is. What I want to show you here, I put a little red circle, I put a shed structure on, it's actually a little bit longer than 72 feet than what we have here, but showed you approximately what 100 foot by 100 foot does. If you put a pivot on this land, you could irrigate and it wouldn't cause any problem. Also too, because of the general size of the parcel itself, it really doesn't propose, doesn't provide that impediment that I'll show you later in Roger's chat in his presentation. We compare it to this parcel that we're talking about. This is a two and a half acre parcel versus a 40 acre parcel. This requirement, because it's a 215 foot deep parcel, you take 100 foot on the north and 100 foot on the south, that leaves you with a 15 foot strip. Now, yes, Roger's entirely correct that we can practically do it, but does it make sense? No, it doesn't. We are hoping that common sense prevails on this, and that this, you find that this is one of those weaknesses in code that the variance tool is meant to, to address. We just feel that this section of code, that going from 40 acre down to a two and a half, and then there's also one acre lots. A one acre lot as a true square would be 208 feet by 208 feet. That would leave you eight and eight foot by eight foot square foot area in the middle of the property. So maybe this code shouldn't apply to some of these smaller lots, or maybe it should have a graduated reduction in what that setback requirement is relative to the lot. In terms of the general hardship finding, if you cover, if you apply the 100 foot, we'd have to put it out towards the middle. We'd want to keep it closer to the western side, that yellow area. That's an existing access road. The irrigation and the harvesting paths of this are quite considerably disrupted on this field area. You can see by this aerial image that all the properties around this are agriculturally used, they're done in the same way, they're harvested, and they flows by surface water for their drain, for their irrigation. So we would also have to construct a road out to that, which loses crop land area. So we don't feel that this is a matter of convenience as, as identified by staff. We feel that this actually creates a true hardship to the practical and efficient use of the land. This is what we have proposed. We have it down in the corner. We have 25 foot setback on the west and 16 foot setback on the, on the south, and this is a side yard and a, and a rear yard situation. The paths for harvesting and the paths for irrigating have a little bit of disruption, but you can see it's definitely not what putting this smack dab in the middle of the field would be. There are the standard setback allowances for high density rural, and Roger covered this, that we'd apply to that, even though we're general rural zoned. It would be 30 foot in the front yard, 15 foot on the side yard, we actually meet that. And then the rear yard would be 30 feet additional. There is an allowance that if we put a house on the property, and this image that I have on aerial shows a box up in the northwestern corner, an assumed house, a 30 foot setback off of the front, and because we have the road, we'd probably be greater than 15 feet from the, from the access road. In that situation, in code, you're allowed to go to five feet with a structure like this, not 100 feet, five feet. So that's a really big jump just because you put a house. Now, keep in mind, putting a house- Now, keep in mind, putting a house in this area is very difficult because of the high groundwater table, everything that's out here that needs a septic has to be on engineered septic system. In terms of the location and surroundings, we believe that the conservation easement does create a situation where this land around this is always going to end up being agricultural use or open space use. Setbacks are put on properties to help buffer from some sensitive use. If all these are going to continue to be agricultural in use or open space in use, there's not that necessity to, to have this kind of buffer, especially a very large buffer. There's no other buffer in standard Washoe County code that has 100 feet. When applied on a two and a half acre parcel, it shows you that this is a challenge. Additionally, Washoe County identifies by their development suitability map that, that this area is not going to be suitable for any kind of intensive or higher development. This map shows where the conservation easements are and they're in the red on the property. The subject property is in the yellow here. So you can see we've got conservation easement to the northeast and south of the property. And we, all of this land here, all of this land here is used for agricultural purposes, as you can see, many, many of the others are. I think this was actually the parcel that I used in my associate parcel example of 40 acre parcel with a, with a shed at the bottom corner. The development suitability map, the area identifies, you got 100 year floodplain existing, you've got potential wetlands and you've got both 100 year floodplains and potential wetlands. I know I'm running short of time here. I have two more slides and I'll be done. The C A B did review this. I want to point out to you that they did, it was a unanimous approval and Roger appropriately identified that they didn't have to act by, they didn't act by legal findings. And that's because they have, they don't have to do that. They don't act by legal findings. They act by common sense in many, in many measures. The chairman at the end of the, of the item identified and stated, this seemed like a no brainer. And we agree, this does seem like a no brainer. I understand staff's concern of wanting to protect what they feel is the integrity of the code, but again, going back to my opening statement, there are times you, it's really difficult to write a one glove fits all type of document. And there are going to be exceptions that need to be made and should be made. And we do feel that that's one of the, that this is one of those. We do believe that all of the other findings can be made and I want to specifically address no detriment because this area is and will remain in an ag open space type use. And Mr. Rust has done his part in protecting that type of situation with the conservation easement. We do feel that there is absolutely no detriment to this. This does not by any way, shape or form protect the public health, safety or welfare by enforcing this aspect of code on this two and a half acre parcel. With that, I will close my presentation and be available for any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions of the applicant's presentation?
Chairman Chesney.
Yes.
I have.
Commissioner Bruce.
Thank you, sorry. Mr. Snellgrove, I have, it seemed to me, and I didn't go and look it up, but you said that the structure that you wanted to construct was 12 by 72?
Yes, it's 12 feet, 12 feet deep by 72.
I understand. I understand. And thank you. I, well, I, I will have a question then of Roger in, after this. And we'll see what we can see. Thank you.
And you can address Roger right now if you want.
Okay, Roger, I have a question, some questions for you. It is my understanding that you do not need a approval to put up a 200 square foot structure on your property. If it's, and I can't hear you, Roger.
That is partially correct. A 200 square foot detached accessory structure may be constructed on a parcel without a building permit, as long as it still meets setbacks. However, that is only as an accessory structure. You have to have a main use established for that to take place. So you would have to have like a dwelling first. In this case, no, that does not apply because this is an otherwise undeveloped parcel.
Thank you. That, that cuts me off. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Chair Chesney.
Yeah. Commissioner Savileczk.
Thank you. I do have a question of staff. When I read your report, this property is zoned general rural, which is 40 acres. You noted that this is an existing non-conforming lot. But as a non-conforming lot, it still has to comply with the existing zoning, correct?
The, well, the zoning itself does not change. What it, any development on the parcel must meet the applicable code. In this particular case, we have sort of a built in safety valve, if you will, for this very situation. And the situation is we have an existing non-conforming lot. It's much smaller than the minimum required for GR. Because it is much smaller, we give it standards that reflect the size of the parcel as opposed to the strict application of the zoning. So in this case, the evaluation is done based upon HDR, high density rural, and this is perfectly consistent with the HDR zone. The, the size, the configuration is, would be perfect in the HDR zone, but unfortunately it is GR.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Could, could I just chime in on that? You know, one of the things about this being a two and a half acre parcel and what would typically be a 40 acre zoning area is this is legally created parcel. It got applied to zoning because, part of it because of the area with high groundwater table, wetlands and so on. What I'd like to point out that's interesting is that when you look at other aspects of the code, that they allow for a reduced setback. They allow us to use the HDR setbacks rather than GR setbacks that are very big. That isn't carried on in this aspect of code. And this, this portion of code that we're requesting to be varied to accommodate this is a portion of code that addresses all the way from general rural, all the way down to low density suburban. So it carries across 40 acres all the way down to one acre in size. If you wanted to do this, there's very few situations like this that come up. I'm sure it has come up in, in a few other areas, but there's very few situations.
Okay, let me intervene here. This is not a debate, nor is it a discussion. You've given your.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
We're under questions from the commission of the staff or the applicant. If you, if there is a question directed at you specifically, then you may answer that question. So do we have any further questions of the applicant or the staff? Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Pat Phillips. I'm looking at the irrigation aspect. Since the irrigation is covering over a large amount of acreage, would this help conserve the usage of the water by placing this building at this area? I'm talking from someone who has a ranch.
Well, I, with some emotion involved, I answered that at the end of my presentation as to the disruption of putting the building with a 100 foot setback in the middle of my irrigated pasture. The way beautiful West Washoe Valley, why it's so green is because of all of the snowpack, when we have snowpack, that the water comes down through three or four major channels. And we have major water rights out of Franktown Creek Irrigation Company. And that totally irrigates everything from the old highway to the new freeway and Washoe Lake. So it drains across all of our irrigated pasture, including this two and a half acres. And then it goes under the freeway into Washoe Lake.
Would there be any, any water?
Thank you. We're getting, this thing is getting off the rails here. So we, we have specific questions and I want specific answers. Are there any further questions? I don't need more stories or fairy tales. So do we have specific questions of staff that can be answered in a relatively short sentence or two and/or of the applicant? If not, I'm going to move on. Hearing none, I'm going to move on to public comment. Is there any public comment on this?
No public comment.
Okay. This is the last go around. Commission questions of staff or the applicant? Hearing none. I'm going to call for a motion. Is there a motion on this issue?
Chair Chesney, Commissioner Doncic.
Commissioner Doncic.
Yes.
I hear from you.
First off, I want to commend staff at, for their report and the rest of family for what they're doing with their conservancy. But following the letter of the law that we have to go under, I'm sorry, I have to make a motion that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission denied variance case number VPW, BP, excuse me, W P V A R 20 dash 007 for Rust Family Trust being unable to make all four required findings in accordance with Washoe County Development Code Section 110 dot 804 dot 25. And the main one being, I do not feel that they meet any of the special circumstances requirement to approve a variance.
Okay, we have a moment on the table. Do we have a second? Somebody's.
I will second it.
Okay, Commissioner Bruce seconds. We have a motion by Commissioner Doncic. Commissioner Bruce seconds. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor of denial of variance case number W P V A R 20 dash 0007? All in favor of denial, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, aye. Are there any opposed? It passes unanimously. The request is denied. Thank you. We're going to leave planning items and we're going to go to item 10, master plan update. Eric Young, senior planner, will provide a planning commission, planning commission with a status report of the update of Washoe County master plan if Mr. Young is still awake.
Well, thank you.
I love him dearly, so.
This was a, I, I know. We're here at the end and so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through this quickly and allow us to get to you in case you would like to talk about what I bring up this evening. But it turns out that your agenda not tonight was a really good lead up for this item. So I'll go ahead and start by saying that I'm Eric Young with Washoe County Planning Program. And we have probably gone a little bit too long in letting you know what we're up to here. This has been on your draft agenda a couple of times and it didn't make it on the final agenda. It's finally made it on the final agenda. To let you know that, that we have kicked off the update of our Washoe County master plan. As I'm sure you know, we finished up the Tahoe plan that'll be going to the B C C this month. So we're jumping on to the Tahoe Meadows Plan for us, the rest of unincorporated Washoe County. We've named the, the project in vision Washoe 2040. And so, you know, it's always a good question to ask, you know, why are you doing this now? What's going on now that we need to do this? There are two main reasons. The, the first one is you're, you're all aware of the newly adopted regional plan. And there are conformance issues and opportunity issues that we need to jump on with that. I think you remember, we just came with you with some, some amendments to get us into conformance. We'll look at those here in a moment. And then the second reason really is that, you know, it's been a while and I'm kind of likening this process to trading in an old classic. Maybe some of you who particularly missed hot August nights this year might have in mind what it's like to have an old classic that you know you need to trade in. So let's have a look at some of these things. So the newly adopted regional plan has got both conformance and opportunities involved with it. We brought to you just recently what we were calling the short term scheduled additions. We met with Regional Planning, Planning Agency and developed a list of what, what they felt we needed to do to come into conformance, a sort of a quick rundown. And we brought to you recently some amendments to our elements that had to do with what the, we identified as the short term amendments. We have the long term amendments as well that will be incorporated into this, this update to help us come into full conformance with the regional plan. We've also of course got opportunities that, that it provides for us. Not enormous number of opportunities, but I'm sure you're very aware that our frustrations over the last few years have had to do with the limitations that, that the regional plan has put on us. Well, this regional plan lifts many of those limitations, particularly some of the density limitations and some of the, some of our ability to cluster in the rural areas and to do some more appropriate conservation type development in the rural areas. This, this plan gives us those opportunities. So those are some things that we want to consider. Some important reasons for doing this now. What about the, it's been a while thing? So, you know, how do you decide when it's time to stop fixing up your old model that's really served you pretty well for decades? And that you look at it and you say, well, this has still got some really nice features. I still like a lot of parts of this. How do you make the decision or how do you know when it's really time to, to trade that old model in? Well, let's look at some of the things that we believe are, are good reasons for trading in our existing model for a new one. Your classic model is unable to take full advantage of current opportunities. Well, that, that's the main one that we've been talking about a lot tonight. Our master plan has never really provided for mixed use opportunities. And at an earlier agenda item tonight, we were talking about, well, why are they trying to put residential in neighborhood commercial zoning? Well, they're trying to do that because that's really the only mechanism Washoe County has ever provided for mixed use development. And that's about that, you know, that's, that's not really allowing people to take full advantage of those opportunities. And those opportunities are becoming more and more important. So some of the other opportunities that would allow us to, to jump on are opportunities for more urban densities. Now, I know that word urban is a little disturbing to some people, but in our plan, you get up into urban really quickly. You get up into urban when you're talking about nine or so units per acre, a little bit more than that. You know, high density suburban, low density urban is not particularly high density, but it is to us because we've never been allowed to do it. So we, we need to explore whether we want to take advantage of those. These new challenges coming. I was so glad to see that Amy from RTC was part of the agenda tonight and talking about what RTC is up to with their periodic updates to their long range plan. As our region grows, making sure our transportation network is truly integrated, that it takes advantage of the new opportunities for transportation. This is a real challenge. And so our plan may not be up to that challenge and we need to have a look and examine whether it is or not. But. whether it is or not. But I can tell you that Amy is, um, fully on board with our update. We're on board with hers. Uh, and she is already participating with us. Some of the other challenges, uh, climate impacts are kind of an obvious one. Drought, change in when we get our precipitation, when we don't, a change in what'll grow here, a change in what'll live here. Uh, there, there's a variety of impacts that, um, our plan currently never anticipated, never looked at because the whole concept of the climate impact was not really, was not really there when we were developing this plan, what, 30 years ago or so. So maybe your old model is also unable to respond to emerging demands in the housing, employment, commercial, industrial and recreation markets. I don't know how much of a further explanation this really mean, needs. Part of that is that whole mixed use concepts. If you don't provide the ability for people to be creative and put together land uses that the market is demanding, then you're not responding to the housing market. You're not responding to the commercial retail office market. The industrial market we know is one that's very interesting around here and our, the regional plan may be, may be opening the door a bit to us on some industrial opportunities. And our plan's currently probably not, not able to really respond to those. Another market that we don't talk about that much is the recreation market. But, um, I can assure you from some of the work that we've already done that in this region, recreation and outdoor recreation in particular is, um, i- i- is becoming critical to who we are. And, uh, being able to respond to that market and what their expectations are, i- is, is a critical feature of any, any planning document in the modern world for us. So maybe your old model is designed in a way that's inconsistent with the way people choose to interact and engage. So this might be a fancy way of saying that, um, there's a lot of younger people that just don't appreciate interacting with our plan the way we have it now. Um, it's very difficult to pick up your phone and use our plan, um, or pick up your phone and use it in any kind of a, of the different, uh, applications that are available. To get in and interact with a map, a zoning map, a, a master plan map, uh, to find a, to get in and quickly engaged, to find any kind of regulation that you may be able to do, to, to have that kind of, uh, uh, ability to interact with the document that people are really coming to expect. It, it wasn't that long ago that when, when agencies started to put, uh, you know, just a link in a document, when you could go through and click a link, we would all say, oh, well, how about that? Isn't that great? That's really cool. Well, now that's expected. You have to have these features in your modern documents for people to feel like they're truly accessible to them. To people, for people to feel like you're being transparent, that you want them to get that information. So we need to, uh, probably rethink just the way our, our document is designed for interaction and engagement. And this may be one that, um, all of us have, have started to, to understand a little bit better recently too. I, I know that at a staff level, we find ourselves often trying to explain and justify our plan. Um, uh, people like Dave Snellgrove in the, in the last, uh, uh, agenda item. One of the great local consultants i- is often looking to us for information on, is that a policy or regulation? Is that, that's a policy. It's in your area plan, but it sure looks like a regulation. Um, how many different, have I looked at all the documents I need to look at? Have I, I know I've looked at the area plan. I've looked at the development code. I've looked at, um, the, the elements that I think I need to look at. Is there anything else? So, over time, as we have allowed our document to, to kind of grow with the times instead of, of updating it, we've tried to go in and make periodic amendments and try and make adjustments. We've ended up with a very large set of documents that are sometimes inconsistent with each other. Um, let's have a, have just a quick look at some things that I think you, you may already know about, but they're interesting when you put the numbers to them. So as you know, our master plan has six separate elements and 12 separate area plans. But within just, just the elements, not including the 12 area plans, we have 93 goals, 275 policies and 36 programs. So those numbers are overwhelming. If, if it's not popping off the page to you that those are difficult to truly get your head around and manage and implement, those are big numbers. So that's something that we have allowed to happen with time, over time. Um, but it's something that we should consider. In our area plan policies, um, each area plan, these are the ones that you're probably more familiar with than the elements. So I know that when you open up your area plans, you notice that they are chock full of goals and policies. Um, all of them have dozens. The forest area plan and the high desert area plan have 86 policies. Some have well over 100. South Valleys itself has 129 policies. Cold Springs, you may have thought that South Valley's one that was one that had most, Cold Springs has 150 policies. Now, sometimes when you're looking through these policies, like we mentioned before, they look like a regulation and they are a regulation in fact. But they don't live where all the other regulations live in the development code. They live in this other document. That's hard to justify. It's very difficult to implement. And considering that a policy is something that the county is kind of promising to do, that, that it's, it's a thing that the county says, this is where we stand. We intend for our actions to implement this policy. We intend for the things that we do and say and the development that we approve and the things that, the, the thing, the way that we approach growth and development in this area. These are the, these are the policies that are going to guide us. Well, how guided can we be if we have hundreds and hundreds of policies? Some of which are inconsistent with existing code. So this isn't an opportunity for me to say we've really messed things up. That's not what I'm trying to do. Because clearly, we love our old model. It has features that we really like. We like our area plans. We like that we have said different areas in the county are a little bit different from each other and may need to be treated a little bit differently. Uh, there are other features of our area, area plans and of our master plan that we've, we've come to like. Some of these policies, in fact, most of them are very well-intended. They read really well. They sound somewhat golden, in fact. So the idea that we want to just get rid of them can be a little hard to swallow. But stepping back and saying, what are they doing for this and how do we really get where these policies want us to go? May actually help us get us there substantially faster than the way we're doing it now. So what are we going to do? We've brought on a professional consultant whom we really like, a firm called Logan Simpson out of Colorado. They are, um, responsible mostly for helping us do this plan design, the engagement part that I was telling you about. How, how do we come up with a modern plan? Uh, they are very engaged with agencies around the country and in the West in particular that have plans and history somewhat like us, that have small areas, a little bit like our area plans. So they have good experience with places that are, that are trying to do what we're trying to do and come up with a modern plan. So they're really able to help us look at, look at those examples. They're helping us design a, a public process, as, as you heard Amy talking about in, in the transportation plan. Uh, public process and public outreach isn't quite the same as it used to be in pre-COVID days. We're not sure where we're going in 2021, but we don't expect things to get, uh, back to exactly where they were. So we're having to design a process that's somewhat of a, of a hybrid of, of the online interaction and online engagement, uh, uh, virtual engagement of all sorts. Um, with as much interpersonal and, and, and actual in the room together interaction as we can get away with. But at this point, as you can imagine, we're not, we're not sure how much of that we can do. So, uh, we're focusing on right now on how to develop some processes for virtual engagement of the public and, um, uh, other groups that we may come up with, the focus groups and so forth that we'll be looking at. They're also very skilled in helping us do some data collection. Uh, you know, a lot of the work that, that can just take up a lot of time for us, but they're particularly skilled at it. So they can get in there and get it done. Stakeholder interviews were, uh, completed, uh, somewhere around Thanksgiving, not too long after that.
Hey, I'm sorry, Eric, Eric, this is covered. Hey, can you provide, uh, kind of the timeframe when, uh, when we can anticipate, uh, maybe wrapping up those stakeholder interviews and?
The stakeholder interviews are wrapped up. We completed those right after Thanksgiving.
Perfect. All right. Just, if you don't mind, just give me a very high level, uh, wrap up.
Yeah, let's do that. So, and then they're also going to do the plan audit for us, which is another high-level review of, of what's old, what's obsolete, where does our plan not meet statute? Where, where do we may, uh, have to, uh, respond a little bit more to the regional agency? Uh, where, where are the holes that we need to fill and where's the old stuff that we can carve out? So we've established a steering committee. They've met a couple of times. They're going to meet later again this month. Uh, Amy is on that with a couple of other regional agencies, but mostly it's county department heads. When we meet again this month, they're going to establish a, a final vision. Uh, they've told us really what they want in terms of direction is that the plan should be more focused, more succinct, more accessible in terms of that engagement aspect. And they want us to, to really start thinking about this concept of resilience and how that, that we can adopt as a resilience theme throughout the entire document. So we'd like you to start thinking about what those things mean to you. We don't need answers tonight. We'll be back with you many times, but we'd like you to think about what a focused, succinct and accessible plan means to you. And what does resilience mean to you in land use planning and, and growth and development? So we'll be back to you at another time to ask you for your answers to those. We conducted the stakeholder interviews, uh, at least 19 interviews, but some of them were many different people. So at least 23, 25 people. We'll have all of the, that, uh, all of the input from that will be organized and, and available for us later this month at that next steering committee meeting. But some of the highlights that we got out of those meetings were that, um, people have really moved here or stayed here or want to stay here, uh, because of the range of opportunities. And those opportunities are open space recreation, employment. And one that I'd never heard before was the ability to have an impact in your community. They see Washoe County as, as an area where you can move and still, um, be engaged in your community and have an impact on it. So what's next? Well, we're going to have a steering committee meeting later this month. We're going to start to prioritize based on what comes out of that meeting, what we should jump on first in terms of the elements in the area plans. And then based on that prioritization, we'll create some focus groups, um, based on the specific elements, maybe the specific area plans, um, for them to, to drill down on what we need for each of those different documents. The focus groups, and I'm going over this a little bit because we may be asking, um, individuals from the planning commission to take part on a focus group or two. So we'd like to have a core group of people, maybe three, four people that are on every focus group, um, that move from one to the next and can provide that level of, of balance and consistency throughout the process so that, um, uh, one group always knows what the other group was talking about. So that we don't lose that connection between the different focus groups and between the, the different, uh, uh, things that, that, that people may talk about. So by having a, a core group of people, um, that is involved with each focus group, we think that'll really help us strike that balance. How would you like to participate? Well, we foresee regular updates. We'd like to come back to you. Uh, maybe on a night that, uh, we can get on before nine o'clock. Um, we'd be interested in knowing if, if an individual commissioner or two would be interested in, in taking part on the focus group. Uh, uh, we think that could be valuable. And we, we want to start thinking now about when we do have a draft that's ready to come forward, ready for you to review. Sometimes these really big documents are what causes a lot of frustration. So we're hesitant to come forward to you and just dump a new master plan on your desk. So we'd like to start thinking about how to come forward to you with smaller amounts for you to review and even adopt, you know, piecemeal. But we'd like your input on that. So that's something for you to think about too. Um, what is a better way for the planning commission to review and adopt these large documents that have separate sections? So that's a question for you that, that to consider as, as we're working on this. Cause, uh, the timeline for this is we're not going to be at that draft stage. We're not going to be able to bring you any of those documents until probably 2022. We're looking at, at most of 2021 being a, a development stage of what all of these new things may look like. So we've got time to think about that, but in my experience here, I know that, that sometimes the biggest frustration you have is just having to wade through so much all at once. So, uh, maybe let's think about a better way to do that when it comes time. And that's all I've got for you tonight. Um, I'm, I can sit here as long as you'd like and answer questions or, or talk about it with you. But what we really wanted to accomplish tonight was to let you know we're doing this, to get you to start thinking about it. Uh, get you to start thinking about questions that you may have for us, uh, when we come back, uh, the next time. So thank you very much.
Hey, thank you, Eric. And, and I'm sorry that you got the, uh, the end of the tail tonight because, uh, nobody expected this meeting to last this long. Uh, I want to thank all, all the, the commission members for sticking with it. And your task, Eric, is so important. Uh, and after seeing what you did with the Tahoe Plan, which was, I thought, couldn't be done. Uh, you're the right guy for this job. You are welcome to solicit our help whenever you want it. You got, you got a, a big task on, to, to complete and, uh, the planning commission, I'm sure would love to participate. So, uh, thank you for your presentation tonight. Uh, it's getting late. I think that everybody's got fantastic bladders tonight and, uh, I'm going to move, I'm going to move this thing along.
Chair Tesney.
Uh, Commissioner Savilecik.
I know that you want to move this along, but there are two of us on this body and a third that has left this body who were, um, very involved with the regional planning update, the regional plan update. And I would really implore Washoe County staff to use that model in terms of small focus groups and stuff. Yes, we met a lot. We met, um, regularly, but it, it, that input and that collaborative conversation was critical to the development of the regional plan. Um, so I would implore Washoe County staff to engage the planning commission often and regularly in terms of this update.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Savilecik. I was going to bring that up under, uh, future agenda items. Uh, so, um, anyhow. So we're going to go to item 11, chair and commission items and. And item A is future agenda items. And I would like to propose that Eric come back to us on a frequent and regular basis and not at the tail of the meeting, but at the beginning of the meeting to give us a relatively short briefing more often and less in length so it's easier for us to absorb and ask questions. And that's my input for a future agenda item. Are there any other future agenda items? Commissioner Savilecik.
If I may add to that, Church Esme, is that allow, is that I stand willing to engage in focus groups and to help facilitate this process along the way and to have the Washoe County document be as beautiful as it can be and as relevant as it can be and is very comparative to what Reno and Sparks have done. And, you know, I'm beholden to Washoe County, and I know that we can do this. So is to engage each one of us as planning commissioners to be on your focus groups and get us engaged and involved.
Thank you, Commissioner Savilecik. Any other comments? Commissioner Nelson? Oh, no, you're just playing with your hand over there. Okay, I get a little goofy. All right. So we have no further future agenda items. Request for information from staff, from anybody? I'd like to thank Jen Gusterson for getting out the manual for open meeting law and getting her information out there so that we can get a hold of her. I relied very heavily on Nate, and I'm going to rely very heavily on Jen to help me or to guide me in making decisions before I stick my foot in my mouth, which is quite frequently. So anyhow, so I'm going to move to item 12. Oh, were there any other requests for information from staff? Okay, I'm moving to item 12, reported previous planning commission items. Because that'd be secretary.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple to report on. You may remember the Reno Christian Fellowship, that was the regulatory zone amendment, was appealed to the county commission. It was denied at their December 15th meeting. Also, the Ormat geothermal plant went to the county commission on appeal, and that was approved at their November 10th meeting. And that's all I have.
Was the Christian Fellowship appeal, was that approved by the county commissioners?
No, it was denied.
Oh, okay. Great, thank you. All right, any legal information or updates?
Thank you. I have no legal information or updates for you tonight.
Thank you so much. Okay, so is there any final public comment for this evening?
There is not. There are no further public in attendance.
Seeing that, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Commissioner Doncic.
We are adjourned. Hey, thank you all so much.
Take care, all.
Thanks, everybody.